Oh, don't say that about yourself. You've been here long.
Enjoy the fourth?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, this year, I think-
We had a good time.
The fireworks show was the best they've ever done, that I've seen, in the four years we've been here.
Well, I didn't go down there. We saw it from other people's houses. We were at a bunch of barbecues and stuff. Everybody's just in the intersections with their chairs.
Yeah.
I tried to give away my pass, but nobody took it.
There you go.
Was there room to park down there?
Yeah.
You didn't lower your price, Lawrence?
Huh?
You didn't lower your price?
No, free wasn't- I wasn't paying. Nobody did take it.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Before we get started with the heart of this agenda item, I just want to introduce a new face at the table. This is Wade Burkholder. He's our new planning manager. He's been with us a couple of months. And he was previously with City of Manitou Springs. And Wade is the manager for both our current long-range planning division and the staff that does both the projects and then the longer-term planning projects. So I just wanted to make a brief introduction to him. Wade's slot is the former position that was occupied by Harold Stitt, who retired in mid-April. So just wanted to say that little bit of introduction, and I'll turn it over to Wade for the rest of this item.
Want us to go around and introduce your names?
I can see your names. Sure, sure. That'd be helpful.
Old Daniel Sierra, District One.
District Three, because apparently you can reach all those.
District Four, and city manager.
Rita Russell, Mayor Pro Tem, and at-large.
Amy Martinez, at-large.
I'm at-large as well.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
Were you- did you work with Manitou Springs when they had the fire?
I started just after the fire and the flood happened.
Yep.
So I came in at the very tail end of that, of those events. And I was there with a lot of the grant writing and reconstruction of the public utilities and the streets and the infrastructure that was damaged.
It'd be interesting to hear a little bit more about some of the challenges and how you think some of that experience will put in here. So welcome aboard.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of council. I'm happy to be here. I look forward to working with you all moving forward on many different topics. Tonight, I'm here to talk with you and answer any questions you have regarding PUD distancing requirements and size applicability for a PUD application. I don't have much in way of a presentation. I outlined in my staff memo the code and what the code requirements state. I know you all had a discussion about this back in February. So my understanding is we're continuing that discussion and having an opportunity to discuss further any items that may still be out there left to be answered. And with that, Mayor, I would turn it back over and happy to answer questions.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for being here tonight and putting this all together. I was one of the members who wanted to learn more about this because I thought 1,000 feet was not very far. And so I was really, really surprised to see the neighboring communities.
Right.
We're a lot farther than that. And I understand, I think ours previously was 500 feet, and it was increased. Do you know if that's-
That, I'm not-
Okay.
-familiar with what it was prior.
Okay. Yeah. I was really surprised, though, to see that the other communities were a lot lower than ours. And it was, it was nice to confirm that it's from the radius of the boundary lines. And how, how many blocks would you estimate 1,000 feet is? Three, two?
Two to three. Usually, it's about 600 feet in a block, roughly. So two, two to three.
Yeah, that still seems low to me. But, thank you.
I think the concern is, is when it's a larger project like something like that, what's going on with Kmart, is that people believe that it's kind of a whole-city effect to it. So the sentiment, and I know council member Martinez was at that meeting as well, and the sentiment was kind of, everybody, it affects everybody in the city, and maybe we should have some kind of effort to do a little bit more outreach. Now, what the legal requirement is for the developer, I understand. And, I mean, I understand that includes Littleton side and all of that. But if we could, they weren't kind of disappointed in that boundary just because it's such a large plan. So I don't know if we want to do something where it's a scale like that, where it affects so many people on the PUD. You like that? Also, to get the information, not only on the PUD, but on any, and after something is PUD, how it's amended. Because we've had a pretty good history of PUDs happening in a lot of town hall meetings and community meetings, and people getting informed on the information. And then people go, well, I don't know, we asked for this PUD, but it really doesn't work, or we waited too long, or it's going to change, or whatever. So what we might do to kind of mitigate that problem, either something where if we approve a PUD, if the PUD, as the design is brought forward, isn't built within a certain period of time, then the zoning reverts back. I would like to get some information on, or, and/or, also like to get some information on the process for amending the PUD. I was, we've, because a lot of the PUDs have been amended, and then people are surprised with what they end up with. And then, similar to the Kmart, we get the comment about, for what it's zoned for, I could just put garbage up here. And one person next to me goes, why don't you ask them what their garbage projects looks like? Maybe we'd like that. I go, and it's just the standard kind of, if I just did the zoning as it stands now, you wouldn't like what I do, and whatever. So I realize that's part of the salesmanship for trying to get zoning change in there. But the amendments to the PUD seem to kind of come, previously, I believe, in somewhat ways that were not planned. Somebody asked the question, in the Kmart property, of one of the presenters, and asked them, what do you see this property like in five years? And he said, well, when we come for the PUD adjustment to put the residential in, and if that had been said at that meeting, that they were even considering now, 50 years from now, putting in residential. So then it gave a feel like this is just kind of the frog in the pot thing, and that we're really not seeing an honest presentation of what they really want to do, but just, they're going to kind of fix up the building maybe, or something, you know, as an example. And then in five years or so, they're going to go ahead and go, well, we can't really make a go of this, so we're going to put residential in. Because that community was really, I think the pitchforks and torches might have come out if they'd have thought there was any residential on there at this time. So I was a little concerned about that comment. So I'd like a little bit more information on exactly what would be included for any kind of PUD amendments as well, so that the community knows that upfront, as well as whatever is being presented. Design-wise, conceptually, at a PUD meeting, is not a requirement of the PUD. They, and to try and make sure that people understand the PUD concept of the rezoning a little bit more. Because people kept seeing these pictures, and they said these are conceptual, but then every time somebody asked a question, they were like, well, the picture's right there. But, you know, that's not what they're bound to, and so that we have a little bit more understanding that what exactly the PUD is with the rezoning. So a limit on a PUD, if it goes in and they're not able to build what they say they're going to build. Any other restrictions that we might be able to put on a PUD that comes forward, where they make any promises, limitations, things like that, like I know certain zoning. We can't make them do a senior building. They may say they're gonna, but we can't actually require that. So exactly the kind of authority that we have through this process to hold them to what they're promising, both the city, the council, and the community. Thanks.
Can I ask you a question about that? So are you asking, you're going beyond the scope of what they put in here, obviously, and it's great questions. But are you asking about noticing when they do a change in the PUD, and would you like to see us do a 3,000-foot letter, or what are you suggesting?
I think the 1,000-foot for a project like Kmart, I think I made that very clear, was way too small for that project.
So what are you suggesting would be better?
I think that the city needs to do some kind of outreach on a citywide basis. I don't know how we do for such a large piece of property like that, and that's one of our, I mean, that's one of our final, really huge retail areas. And so I would like to see it much bigger. How we form that and what we make a requirement of the developer of, and what the city is willing to kind of partner with on larger projects, so that everybody feels that they're welcome at the table and that they have a say in what's going on there, is something that this council is going to have to discuss. And as far as the other PUD, those things came up because of the way that the PUDs have kind of been going in. There's a pushback on these PUDs as a result of the Quincy Lane coming back after going from a three lots to, or three lots zone to seven, and then it never being enough. And then this kind of constant push to make it 15, or 11, or 20, you know, and then people go, and no, the last one that was held up there for the slot homes, you really got a really big pushback in that area. So I don't want people to be necessarily against PUDs, but, and I think that pendulum's kind of swung that way. So maybe if we could be a little bit more open about what the authority is, what the limitations are, and what the requirements are. I mean, you have the King Supers one up here for, at Hampton and University, and that is not even close. There were 200 people showed up against that whole thing, going from a seminary property to, to, to this. And they included additional residential, and additional retail, got it upzoned, and then never produced the picture that everybody was promised, not even close. So I, I think with the, to your point on the amendments, I do think any kind of amendment to a PUD should certainly have the same process. And it may already, but, but to just make sure everybody knows what it is and what's going on. And if there is anything, because there were some comments made, if, I, I don't want people to feel that somehow the city in any way is participating with developers and encouraging anybody to not reveal all their cards now because the pitchforks and torches would come out. So just do it in little stages, like the frog in the pot thing. And that's how that felt to that person when they answered that. There were only a few people standing around when that question got asked and that answer. And they were stunned that anybody would even bring up that in five years, they would go for an amendment for, for retail, because nobody wants that on that property. So, and I don't want people to think that the, excuse me, I, I don't want people to think the city is doing that. I, I really don't. So if we could get the rules out there, I think people would feel a little bit more informed on what they have power for and what we have authority over. Did that answer your question?
Yes, you said retail again, but you meant residential.
I think you understood what I meant. Okay, thanks. He's got it.
Council Martinez?
Thank you. I also would like to see, I would personally like to see the radius expanded beyond 1,000 feet. I don't know if the rest of council has thoughts on that, but I would like to see that. And I would also like to see if there are amendments or changes, that additional mailings be mailed out to either the same distance or wider distance. And maybe we set up some parameters, like was mentioned, depending on the size of the PUD property, maybe you expand it further. I don't know if we could make a scaling radius, if that would make sense. But I live like four or five blocks away from the Kmart property, and I didn't receive a mailing, and I was like, that's, I'm really close. So, and I heard from lots of folks that lived near there, didn't receive the notification, and they were, you know, thinking that they should have, so.
Other council members' comments?
Oh, council member, Mayor Pro Tem, Marson.
I actually think it might be a good idea for this council to consider if it is a retail property and zoned retail, that perhaps the entire city should be notified. Because any retail in the city, if we're going to change the zoning on it, would really impact all of the taxpayers because we are sales tax-based. And so I, especially with the Kmart property, because it is a huge property. It is our last major retail area, and I'm very concerned that, I think that there are some opportunities that other areas of town are working on. So I, I think we need to have more, I don't just want to see a few blocks when we're talking about that large of a retail area. So.
Councilmember Sierra.
Thank you. So I guess my question is, you know, right now, Inglewood is at 1,000 feet for, in terms of mailing. Next Close to City is Lafayette at 750 feet. What other type of communication are we doing as a city whenever there is a PUD?
With a PUD application, we would post the property with placards notifying the public of the date and time of the public hearings. We also run legal notice in the newspapers, in the newspaper, for each public hearing to be held before both Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council. So we do have those two other types of notification. And we also have on the community development page of the city website, those applications listed for anybody to go and review the documents before the meetings happen as well.
Does it go out on e-notifier, too?
Not, not sure if it does.
Senator Kekke, do you know if it goes out on e-notifier? I thought it did.
Yeah, this, this does have e-notifier.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, it is, it is notified, even though it's not a city meeting. I think specifically, given the tension that council has brought to these in the past, when that happens, we just let people know. But, yeah, we'd be open to amending the code to make, make that addition. I think the retail points have been, been very well posited tonight. And, you know, I think the, the one thing I will say, as just looking at our zoning map, you know, it indicates that this is the MUB 2, but it has an overlay right over the Kmart spot as MUR 3A, which would allow for residential as it is today. And so if we don't want to lose that, I think that's an underlying piece that they could still do. But I, I think they want to obviously stick with the infrastructure that's there to make, make that work. But, yeah, I think, council, we would love to hear from you tonight if you want to see an expansion, or as, as has been put forward by the Mayor Pro Tem, we'd be happy to put that into a code.
Councilmember Sierra.
I guess, just further question on that, do we know what the further expense would be if we were to notify after a certain distance or up to a certain distance? That's a good question, and I think there's probably a number of different ways to advertise that. I mean, if you're asking for somebody to, that's one of the things I was going to ask for clarification. If you want a letter sent to all households, that'd be a tremendous expense. If you want to have it advertised in a paper of general circulation in the city's website, that's different. Right. Or something else, when I see Mr. Powers approach, he may have an answer.
Well, I think just a comparison is, you may recall that we sent a mailer to every address in the city relative to one of our accessory dwelling units workshops, and that was, I think, between $3,500 and $4,000.
Yeah, these postcards here for the budget, that's, that was $3,500 tall.
And then, could I ask, how much did, did the actual developer spend, do you think, on the 1,000-foot radius? What did that probably end up costing him? Do you know?
I don't know. I know there were a lot of addresses that were sent.
It would be good to find that out, because when we changed it from 500 to 1,000, that was when we had developers come out and say, that is so onerous. But we still felt like there, we are such a small city that it does impact broad, a little bit more broadly than maybe a more spread-out place. And so, but we jumped, you know, a lot. So it'd be helpful to know what would, because if we required, we would be requiring them to do the whole city if, because it's, we don't pay anything for these.
Right.
So, councilmember Sierra, you have another-
Yeah, and just, just my last point is, you know, we're talking about the mailing requirements, right? So obviously, there's a lot of different communication that we can do in terms of the PUD application. I know that council member Quest posted something on Nextdoor, which got a lot of visibility. So I guess in terms of just the mailing requirement, I'm just trying to understand what the cost would be there.
I'm Ms. Pro Tem.
I was going to say, I think the, the burden of the paying for the mailers is on the developer, correct?
Right.
Yeah, anything we do in addition would be on us. So maybe we've set some guidelines around, depending on the size of the development, or if it's retail, or what intersection it is, or whatever. Then, you know, we do this type of communication, or this, or that, so that it's clear. And, you know, I think as much electronic communication as possible would be good, as opposed to mailers, but I think the mailers are, can be effective as well.
Mayor Pro Tem Russell, and then councilmember.
And I think, like with the Kmart property, there were probably a lot more addresses they had to mail to, because there are a lot of apartment houses over there in that short distance. And so mailing in a residential neighborhood by extending it two or three blocks isn't going to increase that, the mailing so much. It only happens when there's that. And, I mean, I think there are things that they can do to, like, but here's the problem, is like this Inglewood Citizen magazine goes to every household. Or maybe there's another possibility, charging them a fee to put it in the utility bills. But those, those are quarterly also. So.
And it depends on, sorry, Mayor. And it also depends, if, if somebody just signed up for an account, they may not get a bill for longer than a quarter. It could be a year, six months to a year. So, yeah, that's, that's a good thought, but just keep that in mind as well.
Okay.
Councilmember Berantin.
I think, I think that the developers doing a little bit bigger area would probably end up saving them money in the end. Because if they know, if, if at the community meeting, they understand that there might be some pushback to the project that they're doing, they might make a decision not to go forward. I, my, my heart goes out for the guy who was at the Rock Center, because I hung around for a little bit after, and all he kept saying was, they told me this wasn't going to be like this. And they were just stunned. And that was a lot of word of mouth got out about that, to, to do that in that area. And I think because they're still sensitive about what happened with Inglewood Estate. So in the end, I believe that it's, it's a, money well spent if it's something that's a problem in the area. The other thing that I think we need to make sure that we get out to this area is what you've just disclosed, because nobody in that area believes that apartments can be put on that property. And so this council needs to see anything that would allow that, and this overlay that, that you're saying is there. And we still have an opportunity then, before somebody goes and does anything with that property, to change the zoning, because the community would not be happy with that at all. And so this coming up right now is the first time I've heard about it, and I'm pretty sure that nobody in that meeting had any clue that there was the opportunity for anybody to put residential on that property. And while we still have the opportunity to stop that, if the community desires that, then we need to hear from them and tell them the truth before somebody comes with pictures and they feel like they got hoodwinked. Thanks.
Mayor Pro Tem.
And one other thing that I would like to talk about also is the minimum lot requirements on the area. I just think that three lots is too small of an area for, it's like block busting. You just take three lots out of a block, and, and so I think we need to consider, this council needs to consider, making the areas bigger. Like if we want to do a PUD, maybe we need to do an entire city block, or maybe, actually, I think the city of Littleton, it has to be four or five acres before they will allow a planned unit development. So that is another thing I'd like to consider.
That, that's a good point. I know you and I talked about that another time, too. I'm, maybe Mr. Burkholder, you can speak to that, is, two things. I'd like us to finish this conversation on the 1,000-foot thing, so you have some ideas what we're, what we're interested in. Have you gotten enough there yet? I don't know if everybody's weighed in. Councilmember Wink, do you have a perspective one way or the other on the 1,000? Would you like to see it expanded for bigger lots, or do you think it matters either way?
I think there could be benefit to expand that area. I don't know if it's 1,000 or not. I'd like to look at some of the details that we discussed here in terms of cost and the guarantee of what benefit we might achieve by, by expanding.
I think the question is whether we take on that burden, or the developer does. Would 1,000, would 1,500 throw developers into a tizzy, saying, oh, my goodness, you're way beyond what cities do? Does it matter? Is it, I mean, it's not that much money to send a, what is, what are stamps now, 50 cents?
And that, that's always the option that they do. However, it's, it's up to this body, City Council, to come up with a number that's comfortable to you all, and based on what you're hearing from the, the community. You know, sliding scale may be something that we can look at, based on the size of the project.
Interesting idea.
What, what I would recommend with council's guidance would be having a discussion with Planning and Zoning Commission as to, you know, what their ideas and thoughts are around the subject as well. And have them make an official recommendation back to you all. If that's how you would all like to proceed, that would certainly be an option.
That, that was the second part of what Mayor Pro Tem brought up. I would love to hear their perspective on the lot size as well, to look at, scan the area to see where we are with that. area to see where we are with that. Are we too small or not? Mr. Powers.
Well, I was just going to say, I was going to agree with the points that Wade just made. I think most communities do a radius. And so whether it's a thousand, seven hundred and fifty, fifteen hundred, that's really, at the end of the day, what you think would be most balanced for both the applicant in terms of their expense, but more importantly, and probably most importantly, from your perspective, what the neighborhoods around these projects need to hear from. The second thing that I would just say is, I think we would need to do a lot more discussion and research, and again, talking with the Planning and Zoning Commission, about maybe tailoring it to retail areas have to be mailers to the entire city. And if we could scale that, I think that might be an appropriate discussion down the road, because there's, you know, very few of Kmart's. There's very few ten-plus acre sites in town that are zone retail now, that maybe you get down to one that's on Broadway, that may be a P U D in the future, that's commercial in nature. And is that smaller-scale site still having to inform the entire community? So the relative scale of the information, I think, would be something that we would have to look at in further depth. I'm only familiar with kind of the radius approach versus the more custom approach that we've talked about tonight. So we'd need to take a little bit more in-depth look at that. I do agree with the idea of having those discussions with the Planning Commission, then coming back to you with recommendations of how we could make this more effective.
So you would do both the distancing and the amount of the lot size with them? Take that to them both and say, "Look at that and see different options?"
Sure.
That we might be wanting to revisit at this point in time.
Right. In fact, I think we should ask some of our prior applicants as well, people who may have gone through it before. They don't have an application in front of us, so we're not in the heat of the moment. But maybe some folks who have been through the process and say, "What would have your reaction have been if some of these different criteria were in place?" I think there's value in doing that.
The third thing that I heard, too, with Councilmember Berantone, and let's just jump in here a minute, is the, when they change something in the P U D, and when do we notify people? I know that happened at Kent Place, and actually, they did the group that was meeting regularly for a year and a half, saw drawings over and over and over. I saw so many drawings, I just, you know, it changed over time, and we let people know. But it was, it was one of those slogs where people didn't trust a developer after it was all over, because it changed so much. So this gotcha kind of thing does tend to, when you see something change, you think, oh, they're just, they never planned on it the way it was to begin with, and that's unfortunate. Councilmember Berantone.
I'm glad that the Mayor Pro Tem brought up about the minimums, too. If you could do a little bit, I'm not sure why we didn't have a little bit closer on the mailing distance, not that I really care what other communities are doing for that. I mean, it's interesting, but I'm going to go more based off of the concerns and complaints that I had, the feel of that Kmart meeting, that people were concerned about that. So I'd rather, you know, make sure that we're dealing with our issues here. But the minimum on that, and after the Mayor Pro Tem brought that up, I realized that when I was out and about in other communities, they were, they were like, "What? You can, you can do a P U D on three lots?" So I would get the feeling that that's pretty unusual, and I would like to see that be part of this as well, that we're including that. Because I agree with the Mayor Pro Tem that that ends up being a little bit of kind of block busting thing, that people, that's what people brought back, was, three of my neighbors can get together and they can change our whole, you know, our whole block. And so I really respected the way that the Planning and Zoning Committee handled that and understood that they didn't want that kind of piecemeal zoning going on through the whole city, or to encourage that. But I would like some information on some other communities, whether it's four acres or four thousand, whatever, you know, feet, or how they're handling that, because zoning is permanent, and it's money, and it's investment, and it's security, and it's the peace of mind people have with the stability of a community. And so that's, that's the future, and that's really very important for us to kind of delve into. If that P U D had gone through, then I would support it, because to change it after that then is a takings, and I don't want to do that either, is have somebody invest in, and then take away what they've put into that. And we've had that happen, too, where you have a small group and they take away, downzone something. So if, if you could include that in this conversation, I think maybe we could get everything taken care of at one time. That would be, that would be interesting. And again, the amount of people that come, they think they're good, just like that three lots. I went to that community meeting. They did their notice. They had people that came, they were pretty good with it. But on a larger scale, so maybe they would have benefited if they had gone a little bit farther out to understand that more than just their block, it was going to impact that, and that they spent a lot of time and money, and then it didn't go through. So I think a little bit of upfront money on notification, because I'm not interested in the city paying for it. If they don't see the value in the extra notification, then they probably shouldn't be doing the project. And we have had enough of these go through that it is giving the impression that people are coming, getting P U Ds with no intention of doing what those pretty pictures are in the, in the beginning. The original concept is not what ends up happening. So if we could kind of end-run that a little by a little extra notice, and I hope that they're willing to do that, but I agree with Councilmember Wink that we have to come up with, I don't want it to be always the whole city, but somewhere in between what's going to be, and I kind of think what he's bringing up on this radius thing might be something we could look at. Thanks.
Any other comments or questions?
I think I have direction.
I had one last thing I was going to mention, having to do with who you surveyed for the community, and I, I've seen this group in past councils always want a certain constellation, and I wonder if we might just agree that there are some cities we all want to compare at least to. I, this was great, because we have some different sizes that are similar, but Littleton, Sheridan, Centennial, Greenwood Village, Denver, Lakewood seem like good comparisons because they're right next to us, and developers might choose to go to the next, the city next door. So I think those might be helpful to have as a standard. I don't know if the rest of you agree with that?
I agree.
If there's somebody else you'd want to add, or, it's okay?
I think that's great.
Yeah, just as a standard, it might be helpful, so you don't have to go back and do it again.
Just don't leave out anybody who's doing something unique or cool.
Yeah.
Try not to. You go, "Wow, they solved all their problems," so we go, "Yay!"
Well, thank you very much for all the work you did on this.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Pleasure to meet you all.
And welcome aboard.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Great, our second item is long-term asset reserve discussion. Mrs. Manager Eric Heck gets to be the main guy for the next two things.
Thanks, Mayor, members of council. I'll move down here. It's a little bit easier for me to see you all talk about these items. The first item relating to the Long-Term Asset Reserve Fund emanated from a budget discussion that, that happened during, during the month of May. And so we brought that forward for you to kind of give some thought, as well as some discussion, as to what to do with, with the Long-Term Asset Reserve. And as you've seen within the packet materials, I was asked to provide the brief that was done by the Budget Advisory Committee. They did an excellent job, I think, of summarizing the history of the creation of the Long-Term Asset Reserve Fund, as well as some of their recommendations. But tonight, what we're here to do is to discuss with you whether or not the current practice of funding the Long-Term Asset Reserve Fund through lease proceeds from the Inglewood McLown Reservoir Foundation continues to make sense. If not, I've put in a couple of recommendations. By all means, they are not mutually exclusive. You still could, you know, provide some of those EMERF proceeds to the latter fund, as well as some go to the Capital Projects Fund. But again, we want to advise the council is, if you're going to do something different, keep in mind that we basically treat this, this funding, this revenue from this source, the leases at the McLown Reservoir Foundation, as one-time money, not to facilitate ongoing operations. And so I wanted to make that very clear this evening, before you begin to deliberate and discuss what to do in this particular instance. But Mayor, I'll turn this back over to you, but again, I believe that the primary discussion this evening is surrounding what practice should be used by the city. And the timing for this discussion is very salient, inasmuch that we are currently in the process of trying to finalize the fiscal year 2019 budget, and putting additional funding into the Capital Projects Fund, or the public, you know, Public Improvement Fund for one-time projects would be very, very helpful.
Great, thank you. Mayor Pro Tem.
Do, do you have exactly how much is in the latter fund currently?
Good question. The last time I saw it was about 2.8 million dollars, but I'd have to, she can pull it up real time right now.
Okay, thank you.
And again, roughly, sorry, Mayor and council, again, roughly, I think, each year right now, we're at about 1.4 to 1.5 million dollars on lease proceeds from Inglewood McLown that will go into, into that, into that fund.
Other comments, questions from councilmembers? I'll jump in with, I really appreciate the Budget Advisory Committee's work on this. Again, I remember when they did this the first time, I thought, "This is so helpful." One of the things that I was struck by that, and also talking with councilmember, former councilmember Moore, when I first came on in 2009, that there was, there was this very generational, intergenerational perspective that was very wise. It reminded me of, you know, when we bought the McLown land in the 50s, trying to look out for the future over time, not any one group benefiting. And that's a, that's a tall order, but I think that suggests doing more of the public improvement types of things, because they'd benefit all. It wouldn't be, you know, paving alleys, because that would be one area, but it could be a number of things, you know, that we've talked about on our, on our project list already. The other thing is that it really wasn't meant to just sit there, either, and we have been letting it sit there. And I think when I first came on council, things were so tenuous in our budgets that we were scared to do anything with that money, because we might need it. And we're at a better place, so I'd love to see us investing in some things that have an impact on the whole city, that really make, that meet the vision of the city, but I don't know what that all is. Councilmember Wink? No? Martinez?
Thank you. I did appreciate reading the Budget Advisory Committee's write-up and recommendation on that, and I, I thought it was a really good point that I hadn't really considered before, was the intergenerational benefits to the taxpayers. I thought that was really smart and forward-thinking. I do also agree with their recommendation of distinguishing between the sale versus the proceeds. So I'm not exactly sure what the best way to do that is. But I don't like that it just sits there. I mean, some portion of it, I think, is okay to sit there, but I think we have large needs that we need to start paying for now, so if we can at least allocate a portion of those proceeds to capital improvements, I think that would make a lot of sense. And I don't know if we put a duration of time on it, or we just revisit it every year or every couple of years, but I think, to me, that makes the most sense to do it that way.
Others? Councilmember Berantone.
The, the original amount of the later fund was the 4.1 million dollars that came in as part of the sale, or the long-term lease, 70-year lease, that ended up being as part of the golf course, the par three that was over there, I think it is called, because they couldn't have built that shopping center without the, the south access. That you have to be able to let people out at both ends. So they were stuck, they had to do, deal with us, and it was 4.1 million dollars. That's when that property was supposed to, that money was supposed to go into the later fund. And what the original thought at that time was, is that the Bates Station was going, our portion of that was going to be about 4.9, 4 million dollars, or the 8 million dollars. It has since increased in price, well beyond anything that this city could afford, apparently. But that was 4.1 million dollars. Another 4 million dollars, some change, came when the property was, not condemned, but what's the other thing that a government can do to another government?
Condemnation.
Eminent domain? No, eminent domain, yeah. When RTD did eminent domain on us, and they can, they're a bigger dog than us, so, but they paid us, and they paid us about 4 million dollars. Good chunk of that money was used, shouldn't have been done, but it was done in executive session. A good chunk of that money was used to go ahead and push land around in order to go ahead and lease the land and get it ready, because they said that would be cheaper for developers out there, so some of the property that we owned out there. But there, at least 2 million dollars, from my recollection, went into the later fund, that's 6 million dollars. We don't have 6 million dollars in there today. So we have to admit, at least agree, that we still don't have 6 million dollars. So it got spent. It got put in to shore up budgets, it got used for other stuff, and so we don't want to fool ourselves into thinking that, you know, it's, it's not been touched, that it's been under some kind of protection and guise, otherwise we would have 6 million dollars and not what we have. So we do, I think part of the reason that we want to make sure that we have a policy on this money, and some, and hopefully, can't hold an ex-council to anything, but hopefully some anticipation of, expectation of adherence to some policies on how we handle money when we've given up a long-term asset, that we're getting an asset back, that we're somehow benefiting, similar to what Mayor Olson said. And I think that's why that's important, because a good chunk of this money got spent, and it just kind of drifts away sometimes, and it's, that's easy to have happen as things, as things go on. So I really appreciate that we're moving forward to get some policies that I hope that we can adhere to, that are going to benefit the community better than just shoring up a budget that's, that goes rye or having some hard times, instead of doing some hard decisions with the budget, going and acting like that's just a piggy bank we can dip into and not do that. So I really appreciate that we're doing this work. It is really important.
Councilmember Berantone, can I follow up, asking you, so what would your suggestions be, given some of the ideas that were presented in terms of going forward?
I really, I really think that any policy that we come up with cannot, I do not want to see it, I like the discussion we're having, and I want to get the information, but I want to make sure that any policy that we put into place, that we are not expecting, that we are going to either do anything with this money for 2018 budget, and that it is going forward into the future, so that we have enough opportunity for the citizens to know exactly what we're planning. None of this can possibly, the purpose of planning is that it's not an emergency, that we are making sure that it is upfront, out there, what we're doing with this money. So I would like to at least make sure that that ground rule is set, that it's certainly not for, for anything for 2018, and that we're going to have as good and solid a discussion and agreement in public about what we do end up agreeing to do with it, if anything.
So I, I guess I'm, I think that's what we're doing tonight. So what other ideas might others have about how we utilize this money? I would love to see us use it in the next budget, and I think that we could have a conversation in the next month, coming up with some policies. That would be useful, at least for the next two years. Say, "Let's try some things and make sure that they're intergenerational in its response, that they're not, that we're really thoughtful about it," but I don't know what others think. We certainly have projects to be done, that's for sure. Mayor Pro Tem.
Do you, do you have the figure for what is in the?
Yeah, and Ms. Wrinkle just looked this up. It says the total in that fund is 14.5 million, but I think we need to drill down a little bit more on that to see what is actually there. And it wouldn't surprise me, again, that that amount is indicated there, because, again, like I said, the value of the lease revenues that we get each year is significant, but for some reason, I thought it was much smaller than that.
Well, the reason I'm asking is in the CAFR. It says, "At, as of the end of 2017, there was 3,384,897."
Yeah.
And, so.
I think she drew that from the budget book. But yeah, we need to drill down on that.
Well, that's huge.
Councilmember Martinez?
Is there a place where we can see that in the financial portal? The funds for that, real time? No? I couldn't find it.
The financial portal covers the general fund and a couple of the larger enterprises, but not the smaller funds like the long-term asset. We can program that in. I don't think we've had that displayed.
Yeah, I looked around, I couldn't find it in there.
Yeah.
Councilmember Berantone.
You didn't mean to say 14 million.
No, that's, that's what the figure that, go ahead, Kathy.
As of the end of May, we do it now, it's 14.6 million, but at the beginning of the year, we would expect, we would end up at the end, at the end of 18, in 9.2 million. That includes the committed and the non-committed portion of that. You didn't portion, unassigned, it's 2.5 million.
So, okay.
You would have to, there has been no CAFR, no budget, no information that ever put the later fund at 14 million dollars. So we can't just come to a meeting like that and all of a sudden go, "Ah, we got 14 million dollars." That's not what we've dealt with in any scope of the imagination. Now, I realize from the time that we had sold the original principal, the principal properties, that other money has been put in there, but we're, we're, that's, it's not one in our documents. So if you- So if you, you would have, maybe you can come to the table, Ben.
I've got the speaker at this point, otherwise, other than making you turn around and look at me.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. If you take a look at the budget report that was provided at the end of last month, that's where I'm looking at page five.
I'm looking at the CAFR that was, that was provided to us from last year.
The end of last year.
And we, so then explain to me how we garnered from the amount of money that's in the CAFR to $14 million today, because that's a short period of time, and I'd like to make that kind of money a lot.
At the end of December, the full, I'm going to call it ELTA, I know you'd like to call it later, is 12,555,525. Now, that includes the unassigned fund balances of 9,165. Now, that's at the end of last year. Okay?
No, you're combining.
She's combining things. You have, it has.
No, we either, we have to talk apples and apples, and once we start mixing apples and oranges, it just gets all kind of confusing. We have the, we have the later fund, and if you're going to combine it, then all I want to know is that you've put all the little silos and explained where everything is coming because then somebody else will think, I mean, like, if you, if, if we're claiming we've got $28 million in reserve, then I want to know where every single one of those is. As you go through the CAFR and read it, and you go, well, we've got $11 million for our pension that we have debt for, but I want to make sure all of the money and where it is and what's committed and what's going on so that we don't have this kind of conversation where we're all of a sudden talking $14 million and we may spend like we got it and then find out, well, we don't, that was really money and other stuff. The later fund was developed to take property money that was put, spent, and put it into a fund to make sure it was spent for an asset. And then the council made a decision to go ahead and put any of the lease money in there. Now, if some other decision has been made to meld that with anything else, then, then we don't end up making good decisions if we're not talking the same, same thing.
I'm not aware that staff is doing anything differently than what council's directed. I, tonight, I thought we were going to be discussing, not necessarily the fund balance. And you're absolutely right. We need to understand that too, down to the penny. But tonight, the discussion is, are we going to continue to, to fund the latter the way we have, or are we going to do something separately? And if you are going to do something separately, we need to package that. I think you eloquently stated earlier what needs to be done, and that is, a policy needs to emanate from this group or some policy guidelines so that we can come back and say, here, council, this is what we're, we heard you say to utilize the long-term asset reserve fund, separate from that. But the funding of that long-term asset reserve fund is the EMERF proceeds, the Engwood-McClone reservoir. Shall we continue to put the lease money in there, or shall that lease money be put into, to a capital projects fund that could be utilized for one-time projects of intergenerational nature, or whatever you decide what it looks like?
And my only reason for going over that is that the attitude from my constituents is going to be different if I'm dealing with $14 million than if I'm dealing with $3 million. And if we start putting all that other money into it, then we're not making good decisions. Then we're, we're kind of, it doesn't feel that way. So I think the decisions and the policies that we make are going to kind of be determined on that. It was my understanding, what is the lease revenue from McClellan? Because I was understanding, we were getting, what, $200,000, $400,000?
No, those are the, those are the last few leases that have come in. I think in totality, you're looking probably around $1.4 million.
Uh-huh, okay.
Councilmember Martinez has her up too, if you can finish up.
Right.
Yep.
The, the amount of that has to be, I think, kind of garnered together so that we know exactly what the pot of money is we're dealing with and making a policy for. And that's the only reason I bring that up is because I think that'll make a difference. If we start talking about all of the unreserved fund, that's going to be a different conversation.
Sure.
Thank you for your patience.
Thank you. Yeah, and I think we are talking about the future. We're not talking about this year. We're talking about next year and beyond. And I think it makes sense to maybe identify what some of those assets would be that would benefit, benefit multi-generations, like, I'm thinking of, you know, like water and things like that. And if there are capital improvements that we could see that are on the list of needs, maybe identify some of those and put budget, this budget towards some of those long-term assets that would benefit all of our community.
I, yeah, that's a great idea. I'm wondering, do we want to set a limit of a minimum that we always keep in it? And then say there's a certain formula above that that we use, and we use it for various, various kind of CIPs and other public improvement, the kinds of things that we're talking about on making that matrix to figure out what our priority is.
Mayor Protem?
I was a little bit disappointed because with, with the way this discussion was set up tonight, what, what I really felt that I was asking for before in some of the earlier budget discussions, really since the beginning of the year, maybe more of the financial reports, is we're up there with this astronomical number way above the 16.67% that the policy, because we've been combining the latter fund and we've been combining this. What I would like to see is those things separated out. The 16.67% for the unassigned fund balance that we're required to keep, the latter fund, what is in the latter fund, and then what is the remaining funds that are in there? And, and so I would like to see that separated out. I agree with some of the things that the mayor suggested, but we need to have those separated out before we have this discussion because I think it would change the whole dynamic of this discussion.
Yeah, Mayor Protem, we did pledge to change the way in which the financials are presented, and that will happen this next month. You'll have that, that breakdown for that. So you'll see exactly what is unrestricted net assets versus long-term asset reserve. Those two will be separated for this next report. We didn't, and I apologize if you didn't realize, that was specifically what you wanted for this evening. What I heard was, from a policy perspective, because that's what this group does, your council is deal with policy, was to discuss how this is going to be managed moving, moving forward. And again, believing that the timing is exactly right on cue for us as we prepare this next year's budget. Because if you're going to change the way in which those lease proceeds travel today, if they don't travel into the long-term asset reserve fund balance, they would go into, what I'm suggesting is a proprietary fund for capital projects that you, as this body, as council, will decide. And again, the unrestricted net assets did grow for this current year to about that 28% due to the fact that, first and foremost, we had better-than-projected revenues in 2017, as we discussed, to the tune of about, well, revenues and underspending in the budget to a tune of about 3.1 million. So that went into that unrestricted, unrestricted net assets, again, to be utilized for what we are, we would encourage for one-time capital projects. That's the discussion we thought was going to happen tonight. Knowing, again, specifically what you're asking for, the, the July financial report will indicate that bifurcation of those, of those different funds.
Manager Kick, we, we are sort of, that, that next item is the fund balance policy, so we're, they really are separated out a bit. But councilmember Wink?
Thank you. Based on what I've heard in the discussion tonight, what I know to this point, it seems that a reasonable approach could be a combination of a percentage being, being reserved for the long-term asset reserve and, and maybe some formula that allocates based on certain criteria at the time because things are going to change. But we do have a dire need, I do understand this, for some capital project funding. And this could be a part of how we, we manage that, and so...
Would you like to throw out some ideas of percentages? Can I start?
Sure. Perhaps in this proprietary fund. And given the reports, the monthly financials we've received, looking at the underspending and the projected growth, but we also have, I think, five years down the line, a little hotspot to pay attention to, maybe something like 40% or 50% to the capital project. I don't know how much. I mean, we still have some room to identify funding mechanisms for, for our capital projects. And, and so I, I know there's other work to be done. So without all of that having been done, I think maybe 40, 50%.
Councilmember Sierra?
See, at least me personally, I'm, I'm having a hard time just attaching a number to it without identifying what projects that would actually go towards.
Sure.
So if, if, if we do have items that we can start working on within the next two, three years, that would give me a better idea of what to allocate to this capital improvement-type fund, so.
Great. Councilmember Berentine?
I think part of the discussion when the later fund started, and something that we should consider is that we never, we might consider not ever touching that principal. That what it garners, what interest it makes, what, to look at investing it and making sure that we have that so that it generates that money. A little bit of that has happened with the leases that have gone in. We would have to have a lot of, a lot of leases. It's going to take a lot of years just to earn back the $2 million that went in. For us to push dirt around probably wasn't a good idea at the time to do that. We should have let the developers do that at the time, or sat on the land longer because we had it. I mean, so sometimes patience is a virtue, and government has the opportunity to be a little more patient, especially with land. That's probably why we had it for all these years. People were very patient. So I kind of am a little bit more on your side of it that, depending on how much it makes, maybe we can have some kind of percentage of whether we ever touch the principal, the original principal piece of it, and then whether we set a limit on other stuff or whether we set a limit on the principal. But I kind of like your idea of making sure it's pretty high, a pretty high amount in there because otherwise, once it's gone, you don't have anything, you don't have any little money, mommy and daddy's making little money babies anymore. So I kind of like going down that approach a little bit more and having that work for us. So I would go at least higher or maybe not touching the principal.
I just want to add to what number Berentine just said, the, the key words, depending on how much we make. So I think it, just make sure we think about it in a situation.
How much you make in terms of the percent of an investment or the leasing that comes in, or both?
Exactly. Not as a static formula, outside of context.
Manager Kick, does some of this make sense? Do you want to push us on some things? Make us think. It's okay.
Some of it is making some sense to me. We'll, we'll bring forth a, a policy. But again, I think there's a lot that's been discussed tonight. And I think one of the things that I wanted to avoid was some of the questions that you raised, and that is, show me the specific projects. That, that's for a later discussion for you to decide. And we will be bringing forth in August a, a robust capital project list that you will see, not only for 2019, but also through 2023, what that's going to look like. So you'll be able to see those projects and see which ones and understand our, our thought process with determining what needs to go forward. And again, it's, it's not different than last year because we still have the same pot of money to deal with. And, and first and foremost, i- is making sure that for the safety of the public or public safety, our projects are functional and, and workable. Secondarily, we want to make sure that if we're going to advocate for a particular project, that that particular project needs to be done, not only for public safety, but secondarily for asset revitalization. If we don't deal with it and we defer it to a future year, it could cost us more because we might have to rebuild it completely. We want to avoid that total reconstruction because total reconstruction of an asset is more expensive than doing the maintenance. So those are the two things that I think are going to drive our cap projects. And we've, we're going through the process, or we finalized the process, actually, of identifying these projects, putting them into a year. And you will see what meets the threshold and what doesn't, and what gets pushed into, in the future, and what will be deferred. So that's a separate discussion. Another thing that we, we, I definitely wanted to hear from tonight, and I think there's some coalescing thoughts and ideas behind it, and that is, again, it's, it's just this notion from the past that the council had, that all EMERF proceeds go directly into long-term asset. And again, I've heard the arguments for both sides, both to put it in there and to not put it in there, to rebuild the, rebuild the long-term asset reserve fund. But really, there's no policy on how the long-term asset reserve funding will be expended, and that's not what we're here to discuss tonight. That's a totally another topic of, of, that's touched on a little bit. I think councilmember Berentine brought up excellent points, and, and that is, it needs to be, maybe the principal's left alone, you live off the interest to a project, or something that's going to generate additional economic development activity that's going to bring money to the city. We can deal with that for the future. But my more immediate concern was to address the, the concern brought forward, and again, at a budget meeting, that should we continue to allocate all those EMERF proceeds into the long-term asset reserve or begin to utilize those for capital projects that we need today? Or, I mean, you know, 2019 through '24, or whatever that looks like. So I think what I heard you say tonight is that you're open to a percentage going into that. What I'm going to do for the city council, and we'll make this a city council request in the meantime, aside from splitting out specifically the, which we were going to do for the June financial report that actually should be coming up later this month, to discuss, again, showing what the required reserve policy of 16.67% looks like versus splitting out the long-term asset reserve fund, showing that. And then you can see, again, where that, those unrestricted net assets are that are above and beyond that 16.67%. We'll do that. We'll also get clarity on specifically what funding we have in there, the balance today for the long-term asset reserve fund, as well as a more specific accounting of the lease proceeds generated by the Engwood-McClon Reservoir Foundation properties that are under lease today. I do know that there are two leases that are going to be coming forward to you for, very shortly, as well, from NavPoint, that discuss the, two parcels that are out there. So that'll, that'll be coming forward here shortly as well. Did I miss anything?
I'm not sure. Councilmember Berentine?
I'm, I, I'm not at the point where I'm even thinking about a project. Because until we come to definition of what the later fund is and we stop getting it mixed up with $14 million or $3 million or whatever, because that's just going to confuse people. If we're holding on to $14 million and we're even thinking about a tax increase, we're idiots. I mean, they're going to look at us and go, what are you hoarding? Then spend some money. Then you've got it. Spend some money. The later fund, I believe, is, is a lot less than that. And so we need to be, this, what we asked the Budget Advisory Committee to do is come up with policies on the later fund. And so when we start pushing in other concepts, we just confuse the issues. So it was my understanding that we wanted to do some policy discussion around the later fund. Not all of the, if we want to do them in separate silos because this was a very specific kind of feel for asset, and we want to have another discussion on why we have what you believe is a large reserve after I get some more information on exactly whether that's committed money or not, ever in the future. And we can have discussions on that. But this particular, I want to make sure that we're not confusing it like that because that... And it doesn't look like we know what we're doing. So I want to be able to talk about, and I, and I looked through this again, and I, I, I don't think that the committee actually dealt with their conversation with a mu, with a dollar amount. So if they were thinking, I don't know that they were thinking that there's some $14 million probably. They were just dealing with the later fund like they were asked to.
Right.
So if we could just keep it confined to what we're thinking so that we don't... I'd appreciate it if you'd bring that information forward.
We'll do so.
Manager Kick, are there some things that we have not yet given enough for you, like in, in terms of policy? Because it sounds like we got in the weeds on some of this. I really would like to see us have a formula and have some of this EMERF money be going directly into things that we know, we keep listing and saying, we don't have the money, and yet we do have some. We should have a list, and I think that's what came out of that workshop that we did of having that matrix of like, okay, this is next, we agreed. And maybe something else comes along, but we have to change it. That's fine. Have a conversation again. But I would love to be able to keep you moving on stuff and have it over the next two to three years, and not just do this year-to-year thing, but have a kind of plan. That's the only way I think we can go.
Kind of information. Could I ask you a question?
Sure.
Don't you think, I mean, we've got, I went back through some old paperwork, and I've got like tons of capital improvement project plans that we have already. Isn't that what we're talking about?
Correct.
Oh, okay. Then we, then we have that. And it's not something that's coming out of the strategic plan or the comp plan. It's coming out of that, that list that we already have, over, over giving that, that you worked with on the... Okay, so we already have that.
We have a list, but we have not actually given them a clear priority of it, right?
That is, that's true as well.
Right, and I think that's the piece that we, we want.
We've been setting our own pri, we've been setting that priority predicated on two things, irrespective of what council, yeah, irrespective of what council's doing. And that is, again, public safety. We don't want our roads crumbling. We don't want our buildings falling down. We, we... We, we want to make sure that, again, they don't crumble to the point where we're having to rebuild. Because it's going to be, I'm telling you, right now, the construction market is insane for, for rebuilding.
Yeah, those two things, I think, are really helpful. Councilmember Berentine has.
Yeah, I was just going to say, kind of to piggyback on that a little bit. I wonder, would it be helpful if, in this kind of lens, would it be helpful for council to discuss what types of umbrella projects might fall into the category for using of later funds?
Yeah, actually, it would be helpful. I will say this, though, again, I think when we meet in, I can't remember the date, in August, I'll look it up real quick. When we do discuss the capital improvement project program list, that would be the ideal time too to say, this project here, whether it's Cushing Park, which by the way is not going to, I'm not proposing to move that forward because we just don't have the funding. I mean, it's a multiple million dollar project, it's like 4 million. It's something that we know we need to do. But there are other projects that are, you know, more salient and needed right now. So for example, I think back in February, March, we talked again about Little Dry Creek Plaza down here, removing the Fiber Dam, Faber Dam, if you say it correctly, and putting a cage over that inlet so nobody goes in there and sleeps and plays and gets swept into the river. We need to look at those types of projects that make sense right now. And that's like $100,000. But it's a small project, but it's, again, a request that I don't have $100,000 in the budget to do right now. And that's why I brought that project forward, thinking that made sense. But when we do bring forth the capital project list, perhaps that's the time the council could say, because we will have some more specific economic figures for you at that point in time to say, not touching the fund, not touching the latter fund itself. But if we were to reallocate money or allocate money from unrestricted net assets today, we could, maybe you could do, go ahead and, and do the reconstruction of the England Recreation Center as is being proposed at a million and a half dollars. So those are the types of projects that, that we would love to get your input on. But I think if you have overarching thoughts, love to have that now so I could bring that, bring that forward as part of the budget.
Well, I think, you know, kind of going back to what the budget advisory report said, you know, thinking intergenerationally and how all of our taxpayers can benefit. So I'm thinking water, parks, you know, Pirates Cove, recreation center, things that all of our community benefit from, not just a certain segment of our population.
Those are good thoughts.
And wastewater.
Yeah. But of course, utilities.
That has its own fund.
Yeah, utilities are, are separate. I mean, they're going to have their, their, their own funding through the, through the ratepayers that, that pay for them. But if there are general fund projects, which there are, a number of general fund projects, pretty much everything's out of the general fund but those. But we, we can talk about those. And I think you just named a few of them. And, you know, we, we have populations that utilize the recreation centers or, or parks and things like that. And you can take a look at those projects and see if, in fact, any of those meet the criteria that they are intergenerational and there's no other structure that's going to help. Or it could be seed money for Rappahoe County Open Space or Great Outdoors, Colorado, to help us finish if it's recreational in nature. And there are some other projects such as this building that, again, needs some attention. Our, our elevators that are of the same genre need to be replaced. And the, again, the roof that, that needs to be replaced and the building envelope that needs to be attended to. So there are those projects that are, are going to be listed in this capital list as well.
Great. Well, thank you. And it's a good, good start to the conversation, so we'll keep picking up on it.
Yeah, certainly.
Would, would we like to take a break now or keep moving on the fund balance?
I'd like us to keep moving.
All right. Anybody else? Works for me? All right, let's keep moving then.
I think Councilmember Wink spoke well for all of us. I agree with you. I would as well speak up and say, I agree with you. Thank you, we can move forward.
Well, we don't want any group think, right? But it was a great start. Okay, let's keep moving. Manager Kek, take us through the fund balance policy.
Thank you, Mayor. And council, again, I just looked in our schedule. August 13th is the, is the date for the capital improvement plan, capital budget overview. So you'll have, that's all night capital is probably pretty much the only thing we're going to talk about all night. You'll have the CIP review. But just, just know that August 13th meeting is that.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yeah.
Are we going to get that in, especially for our new members?
Yeah.
Along with a copy of the five-year capital improvements?
Yes, ma'am. You, you will have that ahead of time. And I'm trying to shoot to have it to you two weeks ahead of time, so you have two weeks to read it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we'll get both?
Correct.
Thank you very much.
In that two-week period, if we see things that we still want to get by the 13th, are you open to that? Like so that we don't come and say, we need another thing from you?
Perhaps. Depends on how big the thing is.
Depending on what it is. I just don't want to catch you off guard.
Yeah.
Get here that night and we ask for something we didn't tell you before.
Sure. Now, if it's a new project, that's not listed on any of those, that's...
Well, let's agree not to do that, Jim.
Yeah, that would be, that'd be pretty difficult because I'm going to have a tough time getting costs together for that. But if you see something, for example, let's say we have a project that's scheduled in the 2024 realm and you say, I want to see that in '19, let me know and we'll see what we can do. If there's enough consensus for that, we can work around that. But right now, we've got it pretty much drilled, drilled down.
Yeah, they're pretty extensive. I would, I would, I would take somebody to dinner who could come up with a new one that isn't really on that list.
All right, well, then you, you just heard it. We're not going to ask for a new one that night.
Great.
They could try.
Thank you a lot.
Oh, you're welcome.
All right, on to fund balance policy.
Yes, so fund balance policy. As, as I provided to the city council, back in 2016, the council approved a resolution basically stipulating what, what was now known as our financial policies. And one of those policies is the, our fun, our fund balance policy. And so what we would like to talk about tonight is with this council, again, relating to that policy, there's a minimum threshold set, which is 16.67% of your total general fund budget. So this year, for example, we're around $47 million and we need to have about 16.67% of that set aside. We want to discuss tonight, again, this came up out of the budget meeting from, from May, was should we put an upper threshold on this? So if it is above and beyond, the unrestricted net assets are above and beyond 16.67% with the long-term asset reserve pulled out, pulled out of the mix. Should there be an upper threshold? Or should we just say, you know, if you have anything that's above and beyond that, it automatically goes into the CPF, which again, the capital projects fund is controlled by the city council. You, you appropriate funding every year for that. So the question for the council tonight is whether or not, two things. Do you want an, an upper threshold? And number two, if you don't want an upper threshold, would you like to see, again, some sort of mechanism put into place where those funds above and beyond that are put into a, some sort of proprietary fund, again, for one-time capital projects expenditures? And again, I don't know what those projects are. But again, it's just a, a policy amendment to Resolution 51 Series 2016 that talks about the fund balance policy.
I have a question for you. When you first came on, Manager Kek, what was our fun, what was our percent? Do you remember what it was that we were working on?
Well, first of all, you didn't, it was 12. You didn't have a policy, but it was 12.
But it was 12.
Yeah.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, there wasn't, there wasn't a policy until you adopted one in that, in 2016.
Right, but we did have a, a level that we were at.
Yeah, it was 12%.
It was 12%, and then we realized that was not really two months' worth.
Correct.
We actually were down to 9% one year.
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, if you look back, actually it was less than 9% in, in totality.
And we were all fine with that because that's what we're told was normal.
Yeah, exactly. And I, I think, again, as you recall, the process of developing this, these financial policies, the Government Finance Officers of America, Association of America advocated that 16.67% is, is a, is a percentage that should be utilized. And that's exactly what you adopted. So, so yeah, it's much bigger than 12. And again, of course, budgets have changed as well. So when I first started, the fiscal year budget wasn't 40, like 46.7 million dollars as it is this year. It was, it was less than that. So it's going to change.
Councilmember Martinez?
Thank you. The 16.67%, that essentially allows us to operate for two months with zero revenue coming in.
Correct. That's a cataclysmic if the stuff hits the fan and people stop paying anything. There's no building use tax, there's no sales tax, there's no property tax coming in. That would sustain the city for those, for that two-month period of time.
And I think this is probably more of a question for, you know, an official emergency manager. But do you feel like that's enough, two months?
Well, I've lived through several boom and bust cycles in my, in my short career even. And I've been in the business now for 20, 21 years. And so in those, those 21-year period, I've seen three recessions where things get tight. And what happens first is that your staff, your professional staff's going to say, whoa, sales tax is really dipping or, and, you know, in other states, it's property tax. Property tax is really dipped, people aren't paying. We need to suspend some of our, some of our projects. And then typically, what you do is you have a plan on the shelf that talks about what, what you're going to do. So for example, in Post Falls, Idaho, where I was the city administrator, we also lived and died by sales tax there as well. And what ended up happening is I had to suspend some, some operational enhancements that we're going to do. We had some positions that people had retired or had left and I didn't fill them. And we froze them. And it's an unwritten policy I have now internally that if we ended up in a situation like that again, that's exactly what we would do. We would not hire except for critical staff such as public safety, police, fire, those types of functions. But we would, we would also need to look at capital project expenditures to see if, in fact, we could afford to do them. And if, if, again, if we could defer them, we would do so. If they couldn't be deferred, then we would move forward with them. But two, two, 16.67% or two months operation is not very long. It can go very quickly.
That's what I was thinking.
So for example, let me just give you another quick example. You recall the Colorado Mills Mall in Lakewood?
Mm-hmm.
The hail damage?
They're still struggling.
Yeah, they are struggling. That hit, that's, hit the city of Lakewood very, very hard.
I went there last weekend, actually.
Yeah, so I think that, that particular project, when it was closed down for six to nine months, the city lost significant, significant sales tax dollars.
Huge deal.
And they had to make some adjustments to, to what they were doing in Lakewood. And I talked to my peer manager over there and she said it was, it was pretty tough. It was more than what they expected. There's no insurance for the city for things like that.
Right.
That's not economic. That was, was considered force majeure or act of God. And the city had to make, make do with, with that. So they were pulling money out of their fund balance. They decided because the economy was robust enough to actually backfill that with fund balance. But we, we don't necessarily have that type of luxury here.
Mayor Protim Russell?
I actually, I don't think we need to put an upper cap on it. But if we separate out in our, in our financial report, what the difference is. And I think one thing that we, I mean, I don't think we need to touch the fund balance policy at all. It says 16.67%. One thing that I do think that we could do is, I mean, the last two years, we've come up with, I mean, we came up with quite a bit of extra revenue this year.
Yeah.
But we did the year before, maybe not quite as much as this year.
Correct.
Is maybe figure out where we're at. I mean, where we could budget a little bit closer and just budget more for capital projects.
Yeah.
Councilmember Sierra?
I'm in agreement with Mayor Protim as well. I don't like the idea of a maximum threshold. I guess, I'm just curious, is there a reason why we are bringing up the idea of a maximum threshold? And I guess the second question to that is, are any other communities currently having placed a maximum threshold?
The reason, good, good questions, both of them. The reason this is being brought up, the maximum threshold, that was actually thrown out by a councilperson. I didn't take notes, but as to whom stated that, but that was brought up for our fund balance policy. And there are communities who do have an upper threshold. And the reason they do so is that some communities who are very blessed and have severance tax monies or for oil and gas or mineral extraction, what their, what their public is saying is, geez Louise, if you guys have 50% fund balance, and I'm not going to name any city, but I do know of cities in the, in the state that have 50%, their public is saying, then why the heck aren't you reducing our property tax? Why don't you reduce our property tax? Because you've got all this money set aside and you're not, and it just keeps building. So some communities actually have put in a upper threshold for their, their unrestricted net assets. So it's not just growing unfettered. Because people begin to say, let's, where's your plan to spend this money? Where's your plan to reduce my, my daily taxes? What other services are we going to get because you've got all this money set aside? So that's, that's another reason why you might talk about that. We're not, we're not to that point. We're not that rich here, but, but you're correct. We, we have been blessed by increased sales tax because of the fact now we have that internet sales and some, by some business being paid. It is helping us to increase our, our, our fund balance. And, and the cannabis industry too has had a tremendous impact on this year's budget. We did not anticipate that it was going to grow as, as it has. And, and you will see that split out too, I believe. Is that correct, Director Winkle, for this next monthly financial report too? To see that there's been significant growth in that arena as well, even, even with all the competition that's around us. And so I think the need for the discussion tonight is, what, what do you want us to do? Because we know that we have a backlog, again, of, of capital projects. And if you're going to put some funds someplace, it probably makes sense to put that into some sort of capital project fund where, again, it's proprietary. You determine how it's expended, when it's expended. Those decisions are all held within the council's hands. Thank you.
Member Berentine and then Member Wink?
I appreciate you asking the question about the maximum because I was kind of curious about, about that. And I think the, you've brought...
We're not that blessed, so.
You, you get that blessed once you start, I mean, Littleton gets $28 million into a sewer fund because they just keep raising the rate every, and then all of a sudden, they've got a fund, like he's brought up, that can only be spent in certain ways. And people get a little annoyed that there's this kind of hoarding thing. Rappahoe County is in the same position where they've got a ton of money as if they're, and it's kind of this depression baby attitude, like they're just grabbing it and getting more. And then people find out and get a little, and, and do get a little miffed that it should be used and put to good use so that, you know, you don't have something, some other issue going on. Currently, we don't have that issue so much, but we have had some additional funding come in. While you've touched on it, I think the biggest concern is that once you start having an automatic flow valve of additional money going somewhere else, that you kind of lose the feel for that it was additional money, that it was extra. And then all of a sudden, election or two happens and, you know, somebody's just sitting there going, no, that's just where that money goes. And that's exactly what happened to the later fund. Later fund didn't even start with the RTD thing. It started with the golf course. It was already $4 million when we, when the RTD station got sold. And that's part of the reason that Councilmember Moore wanted that is because this, it just started getting spent. Because sometimes you've got a pile of money, you go, got cash in your pocket. And now you go, where to go? So I appreciate that you would focus, if we do put any kind of cap on it, that it would have to be something similar to the later fund policy where we really had some transparency and understood where it was going if we even did that. Because that's, that's hard for people. Because then they think, well, the good years you should be saving because the bad years are always coming. It always cycles through. So how we handle that would be, would be sensitive. So especially as we're getting ready to do, you know, another maybe raid thing with sewer stuff. The, again with this, I would really like, it's, it's nice to throw around percentages, but it would be better to see what the actual money is that makes up that 28%.
Sure.
I mean, just, I don't know how many of you have had a chance to start reading the CAFRA, but as it's going forward, you know, telling us where certain, that these funds are. And you realize we've got obligations. We, we have some serious obligations. So we have to make sure that we keep those in mind. Not everything is totally unfettered there. So we want to make sure we're each, where all of this 28% is being included so that we know each one of the silos and what rules and restrictions or policies and procedures are around each one of those piles of money that we put together. I am not against discussing potentially a cap, but it would be really important to know exactly how we would put something, a policy or a procedure or some kind of limitations on it for the transparency of it and so that it just didn't become part of the flow of process. That's just what happens. Some new person gets on and they go, hey, that's just the way we've always done it. And you believe that. And you go, hey, you know, and just gets lost in it. So we want to make sure that we discuss that. So I'm not against it, but I'm just wary of it.
Sure. Sure.
Councilmember Wink?
Thank you. I, at this moment, my feeling is to not impose a cap and, and perhaps look at improving, increasing the budget as the Mayor Pro Tem mentioned. What I'm concerned about however, is the, the more pressing capital fund needs. And, you know, if we did that, we're midstream, I mean, are you going to have some enough support if we're considering this source? And I, my feeling is no. The answer would be no. But without any additional information, I don't feel I have enough to say, yes, let's put a cap and-
Sure.
... redirect some of those. It, I'm not completely, I'm not against anything, but I, I don't feel completely confidently in saying, yes, let's put a cap. How about that?
Thank you.
I, I, I'm not sure I think cap is where we need to go, but I would like a threshold we could agree on that if we hit that, that then it, it kicks in a conversation about how to use what the extra percent is. So, let's say maybe we set it at, you know, if we hit twenty percent, we have an automatic conversation, okay, it is looking like we're going to end this year with this amount. Should we consider a project that's, that's rising on the list even more now? And we can decide, given what we understand, I mean, people are, not everybody can predict everything that's going to happen, but are we, are we getting closer to that seven-year cycle of, of, of bad economic structures again?
Yeah.
Or, but that we could in a year decide and we hit that amount and say, hey, let's have the conversation. What's next on some list that we're thinking about again, should we do it this year? So, that we're, you know, there's some kind of a tickler that's going on. So, I wouldn't mind a threshold number that would kick us into a conversation that maybe we wouldn't have because we don't make time for it. Councilmember Wink?
And, and in doing this, this, this threshold number rather than a cap, it also then mitigates the risk that Member Berentine brought up about just sort of-
Automatic. Yeah.
Mm-hmm. And losing the history of how we determine the movement of those funds and, and then losing our jurisdiction over them really.
Yeah, that's a good point.
So, that would solve for, for that.
I think it would also help the public know that-
Yep, with the transparency piece.
Yeah, that we're, this is when we're going to, we'll kick in when this happens.
This is why we're discussing this now, yeah.
And it's open and we've said that, it's going to, you know, whatever, whatever percent it is.
And it was constantly reviewing and revisiting.
And I, I, I do think it's helpful to know how much money those percents produce so that we can say, yeah, there is a, there's a threshold here that could take care of the, the safety of the hundred thousand dollars over on the, what do you call that?
Lower Dry Creek Plaza.
Yeah, the plaza. I never saw it as a plaza, but-
Yeah.
I always got a hard time getting that word in my head.
Sure.
But, yeah. So, maybe we know there's something there, like, let's go for it. Let's get that done.
Yeah.
But I don't know. It would be helpful to have you and the finance folks think about, what would you feel comfortable with? You have to manage if we go into some kind of major recession and you don't want to be freaked out and not asleep every night either. So, like, what are your thresholds? I think your thresholds are lower, which is good. You're not a big, huge risk taker. You've been through this before, so.
Too, too many times.
Yeah.
Unfortunately. Yeah, I think we can come up with some thoughts. I think one of the things that will be helpful for council again on this August thirteenth discussion of the capital improvement plan and the programs itself and the projects, if the council desires to, to see us, to take additional funds into this next year, which, again, I don't have any problem advocating for that right now because I can, I see that we're probably going to be good through, they say, the third to fourth quarter of nineteen before things start to slow down again, that we put forward some additional projects. I think Mayor Pro Tem recommended that. And, but we, we've kept it at, I believe, was it five point two million dollars worth of projects, I think, for two thousand nineteen? We can certainly increase that, again, knowing that we had, we put additional funds back in after two thousand seventeen. But we'll need to take a look at those projects once again before I come to you on the thirteenth. But what we'll do again is we'll, we will try to, we will prioritize the projects. You will see what is above the line, so to speak, which is recommended for funding, and then what's right below it that needs, needs funding that we don't quite have to be able to do. And, and you can give us that direction during this, this fiscal year nineteen budget preparation process or even beyond, for that matter. But again, the crystal ball gets very murky-
Yeah.
-as you look beyond one year. And that's been our problem, I think, too, is that we are very myopic with respect to how we create the budget. We understand that, you know, the, the big task obviously is to just get the approval of, of a fiscal year budget for the preceding year we're going into. But we need to look beyond that and have some sort of plan. And again, it was brought up tonight about a tax increase. Nobody's, I'm not advocating a tax increase. I think we can, we need to look at things very carefully, be very cautious of, of how, how we get people excited about that. But I, I think what we need to talk about though, more so is perhaps with the retirement of debt that we know that's coming up, COPs for this building in two thousand twenty-three, the GO bond for the Pirate Cove and the Rec Center, when that, when that expires in two thousand twenty-three, do you want to reauthorize that same level of debt, which is basically two, almost three mils, which generates about a million and a half dollars a year, for that to be utilized for capital projects? Whether it's park and recreation, which we know people support from the, the National Citizen Survey. I'm not necessarily advocating new debt at this point, but I think we need to be judicious with how we approach this and, and look at that. But more importantly, I think, is when we present our projects, you, you will be able to pick and choose, I think, according to whatever rubric of measurement you want to use or metric you want to use to evaluate projects beyond what we've already done.
Member Wink, did you put yours back up again or, or?
It's always been up.
Okay.
And now I forgot what it was. Oh, yes.
She just realized what she said.
That's hilarious. So, all right. So, with the threshold idea, if, if perhaps we discuss that a little further and we learn more that supports that thought between now and the thirteenth, it's still a little delayed in supporting your immediate needs.
Yeah, but again, I think we're-
I mean, not that that's the whole of it, obviously.
Yeah, when we meet on the, when we meet on the thirteenth for the cap, cap budget piece, if you wanted to take additional, put additional projects into that, into the mix, knowing again, you want to bleed down that, that unrestricted net asset somewhat, you, that's your prerogative and that's totally where you are. And, and the mayor is correct. I'm fiscally conservative. I, I start to panic if I start to, right now I feel pretty good because we're over twenty percent. But if we dip below twenty percent, I'd probably be like, okay, well, we need to make sure that we generate some more revenue to bring it back up to twenty percent. Because I, you know, I, I've been, lived that too long to understand that we don't want to cut it too, too tightly.
I'd like to, I like this idea you just threw out about retiring our debt and maybe discussing how we want to maintain that debt and understanding our threshold to manage that level of debt based on the assets that it's, the revenue that it's actually generating for us and looking to that to the future. I, I want to research that before the thirteenth. I mean, that's-
Okay.
Something that's a little tough to say, but-
Sure.
It might be a sensible part that can help, you know, add some more to the capital budget.
Okay.
Capital spending.
It's four years off, but that's going to go really fast.
It does.
Member Berentine?
Um, I have two questions. I've, I had done a request after doing a tour with Nature Cast to try to understand what the issue was they were asking of this council. And is it not scheduled?
It is.
Because it says future and then it's here, but maybe I'm missing a page. Do we have a schedule for them?
We do.
Okay.
That particular issue is coming before the city council on the twenty-third of-
This month?
This month.
Oh, I must not, I must just not have that page then, sorry. And then the, the concern from one of the members of the Budget Advisory Committee, and this has been put out on Next Door, is about this fiscal cliff again and about wanting to do property tax. So, if we're not all on one page, then it's going to keep coming up. So, if they don't understand that, um, um, kind of that we're all in, in the same boat about that, to put that kind of information out there is to make people ask when, what, obviously council would be doing that. So, if that's not what we're doing, then I would prefer that the committees representing the city aren't putting that information out there. Because it did seem that that's where we were going again, was that we're going again to try to push for a diversification of our revenue stream, which just means that you're going to raise taxes on property instead of, because you don't, because the city doesn't want to have to rely on something that's a volatile revenue source when the citizens have a volatile revenue source. So, the argument, it just gets that argument going again. So, if we're not going in that direction, then we need to make sure that everybody's on the same page. Because that, that happened within the last couple of weeks.
No, I appreciate that. I think what you're hearing from the Budget Advisory Committee is one of the, they're doing position briefs or budget briefs on topics. And one of the topics was the fiscal cliff. And it, this issue doesn't disappear. It just seems like because of fortuitous revenue years or underspending years, it pushes it off a little bit. But there is going to come a point, and, and I think it was Christine McGraw-
Really is anxious about that. Is that like?
We can share this if we need it. Those little guys are battery suckers.
I know they are. They're, so, um, there, there is going to be a come up point in time. And right now, it's like two thousand twenty-one, where if we continue to draw down our reserves to help pay for projects, which we've done, and it's not inappropriate what the council has done from a policy perspective. But if we continue with, again, inflation of cost, our operating costs, there'll come a time where our expenditures will outpace our revenues. And, and that is something we need to be concerned with. And so, um, again, we have not introduced any new, any new revenue streams. And I think the concern is, well, we need to, their concern is we need to keep funding this stream so that we don't have those two lines cross and we get upside down. I think that's their point.
And, and, and the community's point when they hear that is fix it.
Yeah.
Stop it. It isn't an inevitability. Your job is to fix whatever the problems are that are creating that. And if that's overspending as well.
Yeah.
So, then that makes us go into a budget cycle where we're, if we're not, if we're truly looking at only having had pushed it out because of some fortuitous revenue years-
Yeah.
Then it was nothing that we did on purpose to create the wealth or to restrain the overspending. So, then that becomes a whole different conversation from what you've said.
Yeah. No, no, and I understand that. I, I think that, I mean, it's, it's difficult-
I guess the community doesn't think it's inevitable.
Yeah.
They think that we're just allowing it to happen.
Let me interject for a minute here. We're, we're getting a little bit off, but we're talking about a committee that has not been, that doesn't make the decisions on this putting stuff out. So, I think that's one, that's sort of maybe a council request to-
Yeah.
-make sure that they're careful about what they post on Next Door because it does get misconstrued, misunderstood and-
Well, actually, in all fairness, excuse me.
Excuse me.
Oh, I was, it was my-
I know, but I-
You're misstating what I've said.
I am not trying to restate anything you're saying. I'm asked, actually asking him to do a council request on it just to make sure that they understand.
But I'm letting you know that you're misstating what I said. I brought it up only because the city manager brought up that issue again. And that's what reminded me that it has been brought up by the Budget Advisory Committee.
Right.
Because in this conversation, he brought it up again. And so, then that makes me wish to go back and go, maybe we should be very cautious about how we're doing this budget because we're not as free or as well-heeled as we're giving ourselves credit for. So, the fact that he brought it up during this conversation, and I was backing that up with the conversation that the Budget Advisory Committee had. So, I, I don't think it's just them. I kind of think that they're getting that because of the conversations, both ways that you're trying to have with them about this today and the future. And I don't think that's inappropriate, but maybe it should make us step back a little bit more too.
Yeah. Well, we, we do share with them. We have the fiscal analysis tool that, that you have-
I'm finished. Thanks.
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead and finish.
I didn't want to interrupt you.
No, I just wanted to let her know I was talking.
Yeah. I, we, we share the fiscal analysis tool. And it basically, again, is price project out to the future. And I think that's, that's where that panic is, sets in. And I, trust me, I look at that too. And we have to think about this. And I know our, our public is probably saying, geez, you know, you said the fiscal cliff was four years ago and now it's out again to two thousand twenty-one. Um, again, when you're not introducing any new revenues, but you know your cost of commodities, your personnel cost increase, we're having to make choices. And, and, you know, our, our basic expense come on two legs. Those are people. And, and we, we like the fact that our bigger expense is people because that's what we are, a service organization. And so, you're going to have that. But to, you know, contain those costs and expect to provide the same level of service without the introduction of new revenues. And again, that same pot of money that pays for operations pays for capital. I keep, keep saying that too. And at some point in time, you're going to see this diminishment of capital because you have to pay for the operations because people don't want to see you cut services. They don't want to see the library's hours cut. They don't want to see the recreation center's hours clipped. Programs at the senior center, they don't want to see staffing reduced there. And so, we have to figure this out. And at some point in time, you do have to pay the piper and, and figure out something. Because we, as you heard me say in previous years too, we can't cut our way enough money to pay for all the, the capital projects that are unfunded. Nor are we advocating that we increase taxes to pay for all those. But we need to come together as a, as a group here, as council and staff and community and say, well, what's important and how do we want to cover that? And I think that starts this Wednesday night with our first budget workshop where we're going to be talking about capital projects at the River Run Park at six thirty. And, and we want to get some feedback on that. What, what's important to the public from a capital projects perspective? We'll do that. And then the eighteenth, the following Wednesday, will be, again, a focus on more of the operational side. And, you know, what, what do you think is important from operations? And, and, you know, if you wanted to see an increase, what would that increase look like and where would it be? I'm not going to poison anybody's mind with, with thoughts or ideas with that. It will leave it up to the public to help decide that. But that, that's the purpose of that.
For that meeting, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Are you going to include the amount of increase that we have, that's been provided to the city? And we've neither had a tax increase nor have we cut services. And I think in the last three years, what have we got, six more than what we had three or four years ago?
Six, six million dollars.
About six million dollars more?
Yeah.
So, without a tax increase and without cutting services, and we are actually have six million dollars more that we spend. So, I want to make sure that we include that piece in it too because we haven't, we haven't seen that diminish either. So, make sure that we balance that out.
I think most households understand that. You know, again, there's, there's been an increase in cost. And, you know, the, the revenue has increased because sales taxes come in greater than what we anticipated. And we've been fortunate because of that.
So, Senator Chuck, do you want to, since you've already started down this road, or you can do it under the city manager's choice?
Sure.
But could you give us a little bit more of what you're thinking about for this week and next week and what our roles as council members are? Do you want to do that now or do you want to wait?
I'm happy to do it now if, if the council would, would allow that. Um, yeah, I think the, the role of the city council, we talked about this internally, not to exclude the city council, but we felt like the best thing that could happen would be not for the council to participate in the discussion so much or even leading it, but to observe the public. And we are really targeting this year to, again, gain more feedback and do more listening than perhaps in the past. We, again, we're, we're trying to do a better job with respect to reaching out to our public. Last year, you know, there was concerns that the staff spoke too much and didn't give people enough chance to talk. So, we're, we're trying to get a better balance of that. There will be needs for some presentation to talk about capital projects and what they mean and how much they cost and where it's going to happen. But, um, again, we really want to hear more from the public. But we felt that the council's, the council's role would be just to come and observe and listen. And not necessarily sit with a particular group of people or whatever to participate in, in those, in those workshops. And we feel like you would probably benefit more from that and just listening and observing both weeks. Again, this week, the focus is more heavily upon capital projects. Next week, here in the library on the eighteenth, will be more, you'll have some capital projects, but it'll be more focused upon, we want to have some variety, more focused on the operational side of, of our budget and how we're going to see the public's desires for that.
Is it taped?
Uh, good question.
Would it be better if we watched it on the tape? Or do you think, I mean, I don't-
Yeah.
I do think that council can influence those kind of discussions.
Yeah.
But there's also this piece on transparency.
Yeah, sure.
I mean, how, is, is it only the staff that gets to interpret it and then regurgitate back? And then council may have looked at it differently if they had been there. So, how would you prefer?
Yeah, you know what? We're not, we're not recording either one of those. I mean, it's difficult on the outside environment.
Well, yeah, that's true.
Yeah, people riding by on their bikes and people surfing at the, but we wanted to have it, we, again, we, we tried not to have everything, people come to this building. They don't like to come to this building for whatever reason. And I get it. I mean, after hours. So, having to park, we thought would be good. We couldn't find another site so we decided to have it in the library, which we think is a good, a good place because it's a gathering place. And, and we may be able to record the library, but not out, not at River Run.
No, that's okay. I mean, I mean, I don't know how you'd record the small group. I only wanted to say, I think part of the concern is-
Sure.
Then when staff comes back and says, oh, all, every small group I was in said staff should get a hundred percent increase. And they're, hey, I'm a human cry. I mean, it's an exaggeration, but I meant-
Right. My advice to all of us would be come to both if you can. If you can't, try and make it to one. And just listen. That's all your role is, is just to listen. And if you sit in on a group, don't say anything. Move around from group to group. I will be there the eleventh, but I have Dr. Cog on the eighteenth. So, I'll be at one, but not the other.
Understood.
I will also not be at the one on the eleventh because I have Culture Arts Commission, but I'm going to try to be at the one on the eighteenth.
Thank you.
Now that I don't have to go to Dr. Cog on the eighteenth, I will go to both of them.
You just found that out.
No, I don't do that. So, yeah, I can go to both of them.
Thank you.
And I'll be quiet.
No, you can.
I mean, I'll listen.
You don't have to be quiet.
You've got to be normal. But try not, I mean, we know how to-
Somebody tries to talk to you, said the mayor said I can't speak to you.
Uh-oh.
Of course, you got to talk to people.
Great, thank you. I'm looking- Great, thank you. I'm looking forward to seeing, and I know you're doing some different ways of leading in each one. That'll be fun to watch, too.
Yeah, we have some interesting exercises for people. Monopoly money, don't bring your own, because we've marked it, so we know if Carl Adams comes with his own stack and...
Five hundred.
Or do some more money. We'll take his real money, but not his monopoly money. But no, yeah, we're going to have some fun exercises. I think people will enjoy.
Good. So did you get enough from us?
Now you know to bring enough money.
Did you get enough from us on this?
Yeah, I believe so. And again, Council, I appreciate the opportunity to discuss these and recognizing, again, that we, we're still having dialogue, so it helps to shape where we're going to be coming with our budget. So this will make the 13th of August more meaningful.
Great. Thank you. Super. We're on to council members' choice. Anybody want to start out? Number one?
No report. However, I will submit my, okay, tiny report. I'll submit my report on the CML conference through you, Manager Kek, this week.
Yeah.
I'll try to have it done by Wednesday. I think that should be enough. And then, as Member Berantine suggested, I think I'll have a few words to say about it in our regular meeting next week. So you'll have it in writing.
Looking forward.
Yeah, thank you. That's it.
Member Martinez?
Yeah, I just have one item. I attended the Hope's attic mural dedication, and it was really great turnout. The mural is gorgeous. It took the artist a month to do it, and they got the scissor lift to do the mural. It usually costs $200 a day, and they got it donated for the entire month. So that's amazing, huge cost savings there. And there was a really good turnout, probably 100 people or so. It was blazing hot that day, and there was a lot of people there, and they had some really creative ideas for fundraising. And they said that they serve 200 families or households per week, so that's quite a bit, and that the thrift store, they're finally getting to a point where the thrift store is making enough to cover the food pantry. So that's a really good kind of threshold that they're ready to move over. So that was really exciting. Drive by and see it. It's gorgeous if you haven't seen it already. I think it's going to make a really big difference on that block, so I'm happy to be part of that.
Therefore, Jen?
Actually, what I want to talk about tonight is a little bit discouraging, because a few people have called me from Traditions, and they're having their recertifications right now. And so I actually went to a recertification process with this one lady. Now, they are 60% AMI, low-income housing, and so they have to go in and certify that they do not make above 60% AMI. But they are raising her rent $92 a month, which will leave her very little for groceries and whatever else she has. And the thing that is very discouraging to me is that, and I'm not saying that this council wouldn't do it. The previous council gave breaks to them to build that, and so the developer has made beaucoup bucks about not having to pay the city use tax, but they are not giving the people that live in that building a break. And we are not doing our seniors a favor by not being able to afford anything when they move into a place like that. And I think it's going to become a huge problem. We are creating a nightmare with our affordable housing is what we're doing.
Could I ask for a council request on that, then, to get a little bit more information from them directly and maybe even talk with their person to say, you know, what, explain a little bit to us, we were a partner with you in some way on this?
Yeah, I think we can research that. Matter of fact, my office has talked to a couple of residents, I've talked to a couple of residents myself, who, number one, there's been a concern that they felt like the rent was being raised so they could sell the property. And I, we do not have any information that would lead us to believe that they're trying to sell the property. I think it's just their process that they go through. And another senior that I spoke with was very concerned that her rent was going up as well. And, you know, if I could have some influence on that, I told her I would. Matter of fact, I reached out to the ownership group, but the woman who was the person who was the local, she's no longer there. She's gone. So I don't know who else to reach out to with that particular group. They're based out of California, to understand how, what we can do to help. But I'm happy to dig deeper into that and do, get as much information from them as we can on this recertification process.
I mean, thank you. I've heard a few things, too, and, I mean, we can just go over there and find out who's in their office, right, to get information?
Yeah. That's what we're going to have to do.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Berantine?
The Inglewood Housing Authority signed an agreement with Traditions as well as several other locations and made them tax exempt to partner with them. And there is nothing that I can see in that contract that holds Traditions or anybody else, any of the other projects accountable for what the taxpayers have given up, and what they gave up was money. And what they gave up was money gladly to go ahead and help the senior population be able to live affordably. We had the lady from CHAFA come and explain that to us, that nobody's really watching the, the fox is watching the hen house here. So I think that since the city, through the Inglewood Housing Authority, went into agreements with them that made them tax exempt, and they're providing nothing to schools, not in this city, not near the county, not in this state, because they made an agreement with them. And I think that we've got to have some mechanisms of holding them accountable. The rent that they're raising this to for a one-bedroom between 450 and maybe 550 square feet is $950. It's market rate. Because I went and got a copy from a Realtor of, now, they're always a quarter behind, but the average rent is going down because of the building, so many apartments in the metro area, the rents are actually going down and have been for the last two quarters. And yet, we raise the rent on the people at Simon Center, and money is being funneled off from Simon Center to go ahead and pay, purchase properties that end up being market rate. We shouldn't, nobody wants us to be in the business of being landlords or our housing authority being landlords. So the rent went up while they're subsidized, and they have a few more Section 8. Nobody knows how many Section 8 are even in Traditions or whether they're following the rules. Same questions I asked from CHAFA when they were here. So if the citizens are going to go ahead and give up tax revenue, if the city's going to give up tax revenue, then they're expecting a benefit to somebody for that, not just for them to pocket the money. $952 for a tiny little apartment like that for somebody whose income, I think the one woman said that she was making $1,200 a month. It is absolutely ridiculous. What benefit are we giving them? I just happen to know some people that got some apartments in the area, a studio apartment for $850, but that's market rate. And some other one-bedrooms, some of them for houses that are only around $1,000, $1,100. So what benefit are we giving when we start building CHAFA projects that are 60, 40, 20, Section 8, and no one can live there who makes more than 60% AMI? Then we've got to start holding somebody accountable because we're losing a lot of money on pocketing all these properties that no longer garner us tax credit. I would suggest that all of you, that you provide a copy of the upcoming, this Wednesday's Inglewood Housing Authority packet. I did not have an opportunity to look to see whether it is being published publicly yet or not, so that it should be available to all of the citizens. And in there is their financials, and they do share it in as well. And this $3 million that they've got, that's investment and all, they were put in place by the City of Inglewood to manage our housing authority. That's what the Inglewood Housing Authority does. They are not gods unto themselves. We have got to make sure that we are watching out for what they are doing. We're just sectioning off pieces of property that no longer garner us taxes and no longer provide what everybody thinks these seniors, especially in a senior building, that they're supposed to be getting. I think that's a tremendous rent to be paying. And from what I can see from the metro Realtors, they put together the packet. I can send that link to you as well. That's pretty close to market rate, and then what's the point? And then all we do is go around and go, we've got great senior low-income housing for people, and we're not actually really providing that. That, I don't want to just do it to feel warm and fuzzy, so that was on mine. I will give update of that meeting at the council meeting as well on how that authority meeting goes. Because of the holiday, they're not meeting until this Wednesday. Usually they meet the first Wednesday of the month. And then urban renewal, some things happen with that, and I'll give those reports as well so that the public can be part of that. The code enforcement, I do appreciate the graffiti being taken off of the MAC outlet building, the billiard building, but it was on there for over a year. And so that's why I asked for what the policies and procedures were, because I don't think that a code enforcement person didn't go by that building for a year. So we have to kind of wrap ourselves around how we're taking care of those issues as we're moving forward. But I do appreciate that they provided the policy. I kind of more in general would like to get the code enforcement policies and procedures. We've had two incidents now that have been brought to my attention where, without warning, J.J. Margiata, Marg...
Margiata.
Margiata. Have I just said it faster? All of a sudden has police, along with code enforcement, at his property for stuff that seems a little unrelated, except to the fact that he came to the city and complained. And then I had another complaint where, without warning, somebody who probably should have taken care of things, I get that, all of a sudden has police and code enforcement. Nobody writes anything. There's no documentation. They're just pointing and telling somebody, you got to do this, or we're going to do this, and they're like, whoa. I mean, if there's a certain responsibility on our part that if we let something go for a long time and all of a sudden you go, there becomes something, you know, people think it's accepted. And I get it. You should go, no, it's not, and you should follow through. But there should be a policy and procedure and documentation as we're going through this, because the police just showing up with code enforcement on anything is, it just looks like intimidation. And so we want to make sure that we have a policy and procedure, and this may just be anecdotal in there, but the second one now that I've heard of, so I just want to make sure that we have some policy that's brought forward to us to find out what they're doing. We also are still going back and forth on whether it's proactive or reactive, and we need to know just how we handle that. And then the police response, I had a woman who, so this is kind of both good and bad. I had a woman who had a problem with the enforcement of a restraining order with, and I took it extremely seriously at the time and was very concerned. There seems to have been some problems from Arapahoe County and the information that they were giving, but there was a breakdown in communication, and the person already had several warrants out for them on this restraining order. And then our police department says, well, restraining order, it's actually a permission order or whatever, so that we have a little bit better of communication, especially when we have somebody that could be in a very volatile, very dangerous situation, where we can communicate better and maybe provide, so that we're not putting it back on that victim to go ahead and resolve the issue, so that they have some kind of venue to kind of take care of it. It did get resolved, and I was very grateful to know people who would go ahead and step in and help her, and I was, I felt more comfortable that she was safe, and I'm very grateful that that happened. It did turn out that Arapahoe County played a part in that, but I do think we could have handled some of the information a little better. That being said, after that kind of attention got drawn to it, I thought they were very responsive and very respectful to her and put her at ease. And let's face it, in those situations, in the end, the biggest thing you can have is peace of mind, because you can drive yourself crazy wondering, you know, that's almost worse than what might happen is. So that peace of mind was priceless, and I was very grateful to hear. I took a step back from all of this, and I heard from other people, but I was grateful that people were willing to get involved and that the police ended up responding eventually to go ahead and get this taken care of, and certainly made sure that she would not be left out of that. So kind of if we could look at that situation, I don't want to bring up more information to it or identify anybody. That's not appropriate. And so I'm sure that you can know who it is and figure it out, just so that we can see where the disconnect was from that original one, because it seems he might have been let go after there was some misunderstanding about that. And it falls on the feet of Arapahoe County, and I'm trying to get ahold of the district attorney's office as well to find out how that could ever happen. And they should have some ownership in that, too, and make sure they can correct it. I do appreciate that we've had a little bit better budget process here, so thank you very much for doing that piece. I know that it's always a challenge every year. The previous year, I actually went back, and I kind of would, I don't know if some of the newer people, I would be more than happy to share, actually starting in May, they had each one of the departments come. And I think some of that I kind of liked a little bit better because there were some numbers attached. It was more department-based a little bit, so maybe more of a...
Member Berantine, you're over 10 minutes now. Could you sort of be specific about what you're trying to tell us here?
On which one?
Keep going, but you're over 10 minutes, and I'd like to see us try and be a little bit less on with the story and be specific about what we want to hear.
Well, you know, that was part of what I had brought up earlier, is that I was really trying to do this through some emails, but I'm not getting responded to. And so I had not gotten a response from the mayor, and so I thought maybe, and you've responded to a couple, but I think some of the responses might have bypassed me on some of the council requests and stuff. So I thought maybe more of a public setting to bring them up, since I wasn't getting...
I have not heard about any police thing. I don't know what you're talking about, and maybe, keep going, but I want to talk about council requests, too, as part of my mayor time.
Sure. So if I could do it through, because everything I send out, I send out to all of the council, and so that everybody knows what's going on. I think that's only fair. And I don't certainly want to take up your time with requests or whatever, and, I mean, I have to, that's my job. But I want to make sure that everybody's notified on what's going on, and I'm just not hearing back. I mean, I don't think I've actually gotten any response at all from the mayor on anything I've sent. So this seems to be my only venue to do that. So if we could work something else out so that I could go ahead and have those done, especially for something where somebody's doing a...
Do you have a restraining order concern?
The restraining order, then I would really rather have done that, but I was just getting no response back that it concerned me, that it wouldn't be addressed. So I would prefer certain things not get brought up like this, but I feel like I don't have any other choice.
Yeah, I don't recall seeing a restraining order email.
No, I didn't, no, I didn't.
Oh.
Because I thought this would be a better venue to do that, because my previous ones weren't being responded to.
Yeah, we'll look, I can look into that. I, yeah, I, again, when I get an email, I always try to respond to it. And, you know, some of them are just, like, you sent one today on traffic on Oxford. We're dealing with that. I don't, I don't, and I don't know if I need to respond to every email and say, yeah, we're on that, but...
Right.
That's why I sent the email out originally.
You'd already sent it.
Right.
Several of us got that same...
Right. Because I sent out a council request about that traffic on there, and so then I was kind of a little baffled that it took this second complaint to get something going, and that's why I asked for the person who had originally complained to go ahead and make sure that they were in the loop on what was going on. So I, but I appreciate that you followed up on it, but, so if we could kind of work, I mean, you're new in your position, I understand.
Right, and so I'm learning as I go what you all are expecting from me. Can you finish up what you want, and then I'll address that in my time as well? But I appreciate it. You want us to respond to emails and council requests. Is there anything else tonight?
Well, I certainly want the leadership to go ahead and respond to me, yes. And I would, I'd appreciate that. So, and if this is the way that I could get it done, then this is where I'm going to do it, so that we can all have discussions about it if there's any issue. And so that, we already discussed that in her discussion there, was about the Oxford Clarkson, and I do appreciate you doing that, but want to make sure that we're kind of doing that. I was just surprised that we didn't do it to my council request, but I appreciate it. And she did get the copy of it because that email is on there. And then the other two things were really together is the, and we can handle this another time, but I've gotten a lot of responses, a lot of requests, a lot of concern about what happened with that emergency spending. And we need to have the procurement issue, how that happened. And we need to have the procurement issue, how that happened, and what this contract is, because now both the contract and why it happened with that vendor has come under question, as well as the spending, as well as my council request from last time, again, that included this, that I haven't gotten response from yet, is also what the city attorney said. I've had several members of the community be very concerned about what seems to be, and I have listened to the meeting again, be permission, that as long as you think it's important for the city, fiscal fiduciary responsibilities, that you're king. And they're concerned about that kind of tenor in that. So if we could at some point have a little bit better, more in-depth discussion on why that comment was made, and what was said, and what's reality to the power and authority, that would be appreciated. And we don't have to talk about that now, but we need to have it discussed.
All right, great, thank you.
And hopefully, if you guys can have another way to do this, I would love to not take a bunch of time here. I never really did before, but it seems to have happened recently in this last four months, and I would prefer to go back to having a little bit more responsive. Thanks.
I brought a surprise, actually, and it's just straight out of charter. Charter names the city manager as your chief executive officer, with the standard authority of a chief executive officer, lists the authority of council, lists the authority of all the different bodies. But, the question asked to me at the time was, if we choose not going to executive session to discuss a matter that the city manager wants our input and opinion on as to negotiations, what is the ramifications to the city manager? And my response is, the city manager has to decide if he's going to negotiate it anyway, and the reason for that is, again, charter identifies the city manager as your chief executive officer, that's exact language out of your charter. How you guys might want to interpret that or change that, that's between you and your city manager.
And I think that's what I've asked for, is that we go ahead and have that discussion, not anecdotal right now.
Thank you. Councilmember Sierra?
Thank you. I want to second Councilmember Barantine's comment about code enforcement. I've been getting a lot of requests, or a lot of emails, from my constituents about just the policies and process that we have for code enforcement, so. And I made you aware of a couple of the issues earlier today, city manager Kek, so I really would like to understand that a little bit better, as well as if we're treating standard infractions differently than habitual offenders. I'm very curious about that aspect of it, so. That's one thing. The second thing I want to bring up is just, you know, as a city, are we doing enough in terms of bike safety and pedestrian safety in the city? So, obviously, being a biker, I'm pretty familiar with the streets of Inglewood. I know that I would like to see more done, in terms of, you know, having painted lines, because there are roads within Inglewood that are used by bikers often. Logan's one of them, Dartmouth, Sherman, Franklin.
Oxford and Clarkson.
Oxford, yeah, Oxford and Clarkson. And I'm not sure if we're doing enough there in that capacity. You know, we've had people come to council and speak about racing cars and, you know, things in neighborhoods, and I'm just wondering if the Transportation, E-Tech Advisory Committee, if they are looking at different ways to, you know, just protect the citizens of the city. You know, speed humps would be one option there, and really, I'm not really concerned about the traffic flows, I'm more concerned about the safety of the citizens. So, that to me would take priority over, you know, some items that I've seen in the past, so. I really would like council to start looking into these a little bit more, and I'm not sure if we can put it on the docket in some future time, but I think that that's something important that I would like to be a part of.
May I tag on to that quickly? If I'm quick. I actually, I've drafted it and haven't yet submitted it, but I too, I got a contact from Denver, because it was about Kent Village, and about that traffic light at Floyd and University.
University.
So, I've written the formal email, which I'll send to Mr. Kek afterward, but it's about traffic flows again, and pedestrian safety. This one was specifically about students there. But yeah, it comes up quite frequently, this point you're making about pedestrian safety and...
I'll stop there.
Yeah. Thanks for saying that.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. I have several things related to what several of you mentioned. First, I want to thank Amy for going on Saturday morning. I was so glad that it was a group that you, with To The Hope mural unveiling. I met with Mr. Sayah this morning, who was executive director there, and he's going to hopefully get in touch with the Change the Trend Network too, because he has not had that interaction recently, but he really appreciated your comments, and was very excited for your excitement, and the whole thing sounded like it was a great event.
It was great, yeah.
Thank you for doing that for me. And then, the traffic speeding thing, I have gotten people from every district calling me, saying that they feel like things are, in neighborhoods particularly, are way too fast. So I would like to re-ask the E-Tech Committee, with now changes that have gone on there, and with the new Public Works person, to look at a 25 mile an hour speed limit again, and then look at the hotspots, the corner of Floyd, Floyd Avenue and University, and Floyd Place is another one, but Floyd Avenue. So, you drive 30 miles an hour in Denver, then you come into Inglewood, it goes up to 35, just as you're coming to the university and Hampden corner, like, why did we, why are we speeding it up when they come? And I think that's what happens at night, people just like, "Oh, I can go 35, and I can get through all those green lights and get 40 on the other side into Cherry Hills." But I think we ought to take a look at that whole section again, as well as Hampden, and I know we probably have to do that with Denver folks as well, and CDOT. But I would like to have us just reconsider that whole thing, with another eye to where our hotspots are, and for them not to know where the hotspots are. As E-Tech, when I was there that night, they didn't really know where the hotspots were for accidents and pedestrian safety, and I think it's a really great group of folks on that committee who really care about bicycle safety, sharos, more sharos, things like that. They're really forward-thinking in some of these things. Let's use them, let's get them to look at some of this stuff. I hope they, I hope they'll stay in that committee. But, the traffic, the speeding piece, I think we really, you know where the areas are that have been brought up, I just want to make sure we can keep going. I see you shaking your head back there. And then the last thing is council requests. I've heard from Councilmember Barantine that I've gotten emails that I haven't responded to. I don't respond to emails that are council requests, that's the role of the city manager. If you all want me to respond, I'm fine to say, you know, council members, or, you know, manager Kek will take care of this, or make sure it's a council request. What I would like, though, to do is make sure we're telling you and making clear that every time we communicate like this, that it becomes a council request, so all of us are made aware of what we're asking or saying, you know, like, I sent you something on speeding, it was the same one that she had sent you, and I think others have, you had gotten it. Let's make sure that's a council request, and all of us see it then. That way we can stay under the laws in terms of sunshine, and, you know, being careful about open meetings, and being careful about our communication. I would prefer we not email everybody on an issue, that we email you, if you want me on it too, as a double or a third with mayor pro time, that's fine with me, but then it becomes an automatic council request, and it goes out to everyone that next week. And whether you have an answer to it yet or not, doesn't need to be, you can say, "We're going to be working on that, we'll find out in the next couple of weeks, we've got backlog of information we need to pull together." That's what I would prefer, was the mode of operating for at least eight years that I was on, or seven and a half, and it's sort of shifted just recently, and I'm not sure what you all think about that idea, but I don't know if you feel like you're getting overwhelmed, manager Kek, with things that are...
We've got a lot of stuff right now. Matter of fact, I just looked at that list earlier today that Krista gave me, and we are backlog, because we're trying to do battle on many of our fronts.
Yeah.
Budget, as well as, you know, researching some larger council requests, so just bear with us, we will cut through them, and we'll do it.
So, I'm fine with you just saying that, in your council request response to us, saying, "This is going to be figured out in the next two to three weeks, give us a timeline so we know."
And some of these are really quite large. I mean, Councilmember Sierra and I did have some exchanges today on email about some individual property requests, but when you're saying, "We want a copy of all code enforcement policies," I mean, that's going to take me a while to put together, I have to be honest. I'm not even aware of all of them, and so, just bear with us, we will get to it, but it's, you know, it's asking a lot, I'm going to have to work with, you know, the PD to get those things done. But, yeah, some of them are simple, you know, like, how many building, somebody asked about the number of building permits this year, we crank that out, because we've got that data right where we need it. But, if it's, you know, some sort of research involved, it's going to take us a little bit to get it done. And again, I'm not one to complain about it, we get to it, we try to work on it, I'm just asking for your patience during this time too, with, you know, some key staff now gone, that, you know, we're having to do some extra work, so we're working on it.
Absolutely, yeah. You know what helped me for is that list.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We used to have a list, that it's working on or not resolved.
No, it is, we have it, you have to, yeah, we get it.
Where is it, though? I don't see it. I see we get our update, like, the monthly update.
Councilmember Newsletter?
I see that one, but I don't see the council requests that are upcoming, that haven't been answered yet.
That's why I'm bringing this up.
Oh, gotcha.
So that you just know that it's on the radar, and then it's...
They're numbered, or they've been numbered in the past, so that's why some...
Yeah, they are numbered.
So do you still have them?
Yeah.
And we haven't been getting it.
Okay.
We always get the weekly updates.
Yeah, we get the updates.
The running list would be helpful to say where it is.
I'll talk with Krista, and we'll make sure that that running list gets back.
Yeah, maybe that one helps.
Yeah.
That's why I brought it up, is I thought...
Gotcha.
So...
See, I don't, all I do is...
You don't see what we see.
I crank through the council request response and give it to Krista, but I'm not blaming her, but...
And maybe she doesn't know how we do it.
Let's just make sure that we have, I'll make sure that we have the whole list on there, so you can see where things are.
Yeah.
And then I would be less, I won't bring stuff up again, then, if I know that it's at least on your radar.
Okay, gotcha.
But, I don't know if you feel like when you're saying something, it isn't making it on the list? Is it, does it come out in a request?
If you want, I have everything that I've requested, the last four meetings, I will write that list up, and no, it's not, I don't feel that it's being responded to.
Yeah, I try to take notes quickly.
The other things we used to have, and I don't know if this is for somebody who's not, who doesn't, is actually, we had these notebooks, these little, I don't know if you've seen them around, four by eight...
Yeah, I've seen them, no, trust me, I take a lot of notes.
We had them on every seat, and you would fill it out, and by the end of the week, give it to you, it makes it easier for you.
You can do that too, I'm happy to have those, but I will say this, you know, I'm taking notes, and the last few meetings has been like, "And I want this, and I want this, and I want a pony," and I'm like, "Oh, God." I mean, I ran out of pencil, but we'll get there.
We're having this conversation.
Just bear with me, we'll get it taken care of.
See, like, I think you misinterpret sometimes, because I don't want all of the council, all of the code policies, like, the entire book. I want to know whether it's proactive or reactive, and whether it's normal for somebody to just show up prior to a warning, and just show up with cops and that, because that's intimidating. So it's really those two things, and maybe you're taking it that you want the whole code rewritten, that's not really it. And I like it when we all talk, because I want a crosswalk at Oxford and Clarkson, and so maybe we have some similar things where we can help each other, so I kind of like that we have the discussion here, rather than write it, and we're all writing four different things on the same issue, that maybe we would do it differently. So I kind of don't like it to be like, all separate, private...
Well, I would like to say that I feel sometimes we go way over the board in terms of information that we give about citizens, that I've, and I've had other people tell me, they feel very uncomfortable, because their case is being talked about here, in whatever way that we think it is going, and it's, and if there's another person involved who disagrees with that, I would prefer that we maybe highlight it here, but we don't need to go on and on retelling the story. And that's what I'm concerned about. I think we need to say, "I have a council request, it's this, can you please check on that?"
But I'm getting feedback from people that we're not taking their issues seriously. I don't sit at home and go, "What can I talk about during council member choice?" These are, every single one of these are people in my community that are either having a problem and want something resolved, or have an issue, and think it ought to be addressed. Every single one of these, I didn't make them up.
I'm not saying that you are, nor am I discounting them. So, I think we end it here, we know that we have council requests, we're going to be a little bit more careful about them, make sure that if it doesn't show up in the next week, that maybe it was an oversight, and we make sure that it is. And that you're going to keep a long, you're going to keep the list coming.
And we're not ignoring it either, I mean, you know, some of these, I probably need to do a better job too, of saying, "Okay, so if I hear you correctly, there's this request."
Thanks. You were told too, to let us know, when this is way too much.
Or, and if there's consensus, because, I mean, in some cases, again, they're, these are, some of them are large requests, and I know that, you know, people are scrambling to get these done, and I could create a whole other position just for council requests, I mean, literally.
If you would be honest with us and saying, "This is a lot, does everybody want this? Is this just one issue, can we narrow it down?" I would be glad, I'm sure we're all, we don't want, you've lost a staff, a major staff position, and, so, great. That's the end of my council requests, or council report, and so, city manager.
Well, the only thing I had, I just mentioned earlier, and that is, this Wednesday night, at 6:30 PM at River Run Park, we'll have our first budget workshop, and I hope that people come. Recognizing again, summertime, it's hot, it's July, people, but if you get bored, you can go surf in the river. Yeah. It is low flow right now.
And maybe get your ankles wet.
But yeah.
Right, I still want her.
Please come to that, that's all I have.
The attorney.
No report.
All right, we are adjourned. See you on Wednesday, September 11.